Call the city council budget hearing to order. Commissioner Smith, you give us the prayer and the pledge, please, sir.
No, Lord, we come once again before your presence humble. Ask you have a father continue shall be blessed upon us continually God will direct us, our heavenly father. Participate in this budget hearing process that would be good steward of all that you have provided for us. We pray this in our son, Jesus' name, amen.
Flag allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Welcome to the public meeting of the city council, the city of Apopka. Please all turn off all cell phones or set them to silent. The city council permits and encourages input and comments by members of the public on all matters which may become before the council for action. If you wish to address the council this afternoon, please make sure you have filled out a card with your contact information and have presented it to the clerk. When called upon, proceed to the podium and speak clearly into the microphone stating your name, address of record, organization, if any, and direct your comments to the city council, not the individual commissioner, staff, or members of the public. The council and the city staff encourages constructive criticism, however, personal attacks are prohibited. Please observe general rules of decorum and civility. Speakers and members of the audit shall refrain from rude or derogatory remarks, shouting disruptions, reflections as to integrity, slander, abusive comments, profanity, vulgarities, and statements as to personalities. Any violations of these provisions may result in the issuance of verbal warnings, including warning for trespass. If violations persist after such warnings, violators may be removed from the council chambers. All right, Rob Hipper, first up. And we're going to change the order a little bit, we're going to bring up streets and sanitation right after IT for anybody listening.
Mayor Commissioners, Robert Hipper, Information Technology Director. This evening I'll be presenting the fiscal year twenty six budget. Uh, let's start off with the department overview. Currently, we have a eleven, our authorized eleven position uh team in the information technology department. We're responsible for all computational, voice, video, multimedia, uh, anything that touches the internet mostly. Uh, if it has a power cord somehow, it becomes an IT issue. Uh, we currently operate a help desk that has seven hundred and thirty five employees that can report to it. We've completed over twenty seven hundred work orders since October first of last year. Uh, we do uh maintain and support all of our physical hardware, computers, servers, switches, routers, phones, um PBX system. Uh, we do it from uh keyboard to mouse pad, everything in between. I promote facilitate the adoption integration of the current technologies. Uh, we do all of the training, planning, uh, support for the different departments. We develop, enhance, and maintain the uh enterprise network versus uh two different um IS or internet service providers, so we have high availability for all departments coming in. Uh, we tuck conduct all the cybersecurity training and awareness for all the employees. Do a lot of phishing campaigns to make sure they're doing well, and sometimes we get unintended phishing campaigns that come in and don't do so well. Uh, we provide GIS uh support for the city itself. At some point that may shift, but currently uh IT is falling under the information technology, or GIS is falling under the information technology. Um, website, we have a media team that takes care of all the uh website newsletters and social media channels. Uh, quick overview again, uh, with eleven positions, those are just some of the numbers of uh hardware and ice devices we maintain. For the social media, we have six Facebook accounts, this is not counting it or counting anyone on the council, that's not the mayor or the commissioners. Instagram, there's three uh different pages for that, YouTube channel, there's a LinkedIn and the four electronic newsletters that go out, uh, whether weekly or monthly. Our current uh budget request right now is at five point six million. Um, I can tell you, once we get into the nitgrit, the uh Motorola takes up about two million of our uh budget requests for this time right now. So that's for police and fire use, but it falls under the IT department, which is not an issue. I think McKinley did that on purpose to make his look better. Um, let's get into it, social media, just some of the stats from twenty nineteen, um, when we started keeping it. Facebook followers, the city site had fifteen thousand eight hundred roughly. July of twenty four moved up to eighteen nine, and then July of twenty five nineteen five. Instagram nineteen hundred back in twenty nineteen, forty eight hundred twenty twenty four, and sixty two hundred and twenty five. We didn't do any type of streaming back in twenty nineteen, so there is no YouTube following on that. Last year this time, eleven hundred followers, now we're just shy of twelve hundred and fifty. Uh, accomplishments this past year, uh, we've done several sites for police uh security camera installation throughout the city. The Motorola comparator, if you remember, was budgeted previously last year with a second portion coming in this year, which is part of the ask um to upgrade their virtual comparator. That's been completed already. The Fran Carlton AV Center replacement has been completed, I don't know if either of you or any of you had a chance to get up there and look at it, but they have two large screens, laser projectors, and sound that'll knock you out. Firewall upgrades, our core uh firewalls have been upgraded for and to include high availability. All of our outlined uh stations that are not on fiber, such as our fire stations. Uh, some of the water plants, Northwest Rec, they also had the firewalls replaced, upgraded to the latest greatest. And we communicate directly back through an IPsec VPN. Our seam source solution has been implemented and is working well and worth its weight in gold. Um, we've increased engagements across all social media plat- platforms, and currently we're underway with our pen thresh- penetration testing, which is both internal and external at this time. Some of the highlights, uh, the expenses that have increased this year. My communications line, there's a hundred and eighty five thousand dollar S that wasn't there last year, and this is for the APX next radios. These radios are somewhat of a smartphone feature. Um, they have cellular uh cellular capability, which is included in that. There's GPS, they can see themselves or other units in there. And there's over the air programming, that is a feature, of course, on the IT side that we like, so that we don't have to call either an officer or firefighter in to program the radio, we can do it remotely. That number will go down last year, that is co-termining um of the prior year as well as this year, so that number should go down about thirty percent next year for that's uh cost on it. Repair and maintenance, the enterprise GIS uh solution we have has gone up twenty three thousand per year. Um, the Motorola uh managed detection response has increased to twenty nine thousand, that's not the actual cost of it, that's how much it has gone up over last year. The P twenty five maintenance agreement is seeing a hundred and twenty a thousand dollar increase. The SUA, which is our software assurance, every two years we get upgraded the latest graded software, um, that's gone up a hundred and five thousand as well. For those Motorola pieces, the increase on those is mainly due to the uh previous uh contract we had was a ten year maintenance contract on the uh SUA. And that kind of held down the P twenty five portion of it, so that lasts, right now we're coming off of year ten of ten on that contract. So this is the worst case scenario for what I'm looking at doing, at least under five year contract, try to keep the rates the same. But that is the worst case scenario increase uh that we're going to see. Uh, ransomware defense, um, that should be rea- that software is renewing for another three years. And cybersecurity, same software, which we didn't have last year, has a cost of sixty eight thousand. Machinery and equipment, sixty four hundred line is the second half of the Motorola comparator. Even though it's been completely installed, this is going to be the second half, which will um finish that project. So overall, there's a twelve point eight percent increase in our budget. Um, initiatives coming up, we have the wireless ring upgrade. We have a uh system in place currently that allows us to get voice and data throughout the city. We don't have fiber, again, as I've mentioned, to all of our outlying stations. Um, we rely on a wireless uh transport for it, so we're going to upgrade to a six gigahertz radio that'll have uh the ability to transport at gig speed. Uh, all different dire- are all directions around the ring. Uh, the current ones we had are about ten years old, so it's time for an upgrade, and with Station Six going in, they have probably just shy of uh eighteen cameras at that station, plus all of the wireless, uh, they're going to be a completely wireless station as well, so they will be pulling a lot of bandwidth. Harmon Tower is going to be the first upgrade, which is going to be done on this budget year. Um, hardware backup, that backup the entire city's uh software file servers, um, any uh, any important information we have is going to be upgraded. Our current system's three years old, so we'll be upgrading that. We'll continue our security system expansion, which is cameras, um, all different departments are asking for cameras so that they can uh do some automation on some of their locations and not have to continue to visit them. Code enforcement software replacement is not included in the current ERP uh solution we have, so that'll be another solution that'll be implemented. And of course, the uh multi-million dollar this year, and I would imagine there's going to be some funds coming over on the finance side for the ERP implementation, but we will be working hand in hand with finance to see what software we can um get rid of through this uh implementation. The idea of this Tyler is to get rid of any any software that we're currently having one offs that admins can't handle, so that would talk to each other. So Tyler is going to have a much more robust uh solution that can do many different disciplines, so we're going to see what we can get rid of and hopefully have some cost savings. Having that, I'll answer any questions.
Any questions for Rob?
We've got a couple. The, and thank you for your presentation, I appreciate that. It comparator, wha- what is that, is like a flux capacitor?
Similar, uh, doesn't go as fast, though, so a comparator looks at the channels coming in, so when somebody keys up the radio, it's looking for the best channel to give them, the highest signal uh coming in, but it's almost instantaneously.
Okay.
Uh, previously, it was a physical piece of machinery that I've put in into a virtual machine. So it seems like a lot of money for it, I seem to think it's a lot of money to convert something to a virtual comparator, it's 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 a physical machine still running a virtual instance of the comparator itself, so it's basically looking for the best signal out there when somebody keys up to make sure they have a secure channel and the best reception.
Gotcha, okay. And then it was brought up yesterday at uh by a resident to start some AI implementation to kind of create some efficiencies. Now, we don't want to go too far with that, obviously, but are we looking into that at all to to kind of help out departments?
Yeah, so previously, um, I'd gotten with the mayor and I gave a sample policy or a acceptable use, responsible use policy of AI to make sure that we're on board with it, because there's obviously, you know, there's a lot of powerful uh tools we can use for that. Whether it's the police department uh doing um, you know, crime prevention, uh, loo- uh, what have you, there's a, there's a an inordinate amount of things they can do with it, but same thing with public services for the meters, um, there, there's a lot of positive that can be done with it. However, I think we're going to want to look for something that's an actual private solution and not, you know, like chat GPT. We're certainly going to have to be careful with what we put in there, the police department can't. And and one of the biggest things a lot of people use it for is if their grammar's not that great, they'll take a report, put it in there, and not necessarily a police department, but it can be anybody, if English isn't their first language. They'll put the report in and ask, you know, request it to, you know, hey, sweeten this up a little bit for me, make it look right. And it comes back and, you know, you can usually tell when something's written by AI, I mean, it's, you can look at the person and you just know how somebody usually writes or talks, and you're like, okay.
Sure.
And it looks great, um, but if you put information in there, that shouldn't be out, so it's any type of C just, which is a huge no-no. Um, any type of social security numbers, any, anything that you're putting, any HIPAA information, we have to be careful with it. So the policy I presented the mayor, I want to say in February, March of this year, we're showing um responsible use for it, how it would be used, and where, you know, where we'll stay away from it.
Okay.
But anything, you know, absolutely, if we can certainly increase something productivity, it absolutely needs to be done.
Yeah, and I mean, it was brought up specifically to kind of the utility department and trying to get billing a little more streamlined, if we could, or or take some human component out of that, again, just to better customer service, but not having that many uh people involved in it. Um, so thank you for that, and the last one, the code enforcement software. What's that, how is that going to help them, I guess, what what's that software going to do for them?
So currently, they're using admins for code enforcement, and it it slipped the Tyler, I'm not sure it didn't get written into the scope of it, so um, I don't know that they did or didn't like the Tyler piece, so currently, they put all of their code violations in there, it's got their code of ordinances in it. Um, they're able to put their pictures of the code violations, and basically, it's it's keeping track of everything they're doing. So they have a case built in there, it assigns case number, you know, it goes, you know, supervisors can see it, approve it, and whatever they're doing. So with admins going away, there's going to leave a void that has to be filled. So they're looking at several different solutions, I was thinking that we may have one up and running prior to this fiscal year ending, but it may get pushed till next year.
Okay, so just it'll help to create a little more streamlined.
Accountability, yes, absolutely, and anything we can get that's going to talk to Tyler is the idea is that everything's talking together. Currently, we have a closed system, nothing talks to it, it's all a manual import export that they have to do. Um, public services, public works, excuse me, on the utility side, um, they're very well aware of some of the the hardships that they're having to deal with down there. We try to assist them with some of the imports, but there, there's a myriad of uh software that we're hopefully going to get rid of, that Tyler should be able to replace.
Okay. All right, so I'll have, thank you.
Mr. Smith?
Uh, I believe it was last year you asked for additional personnel, you're in need of additional personnel this year?
I do not need any current personnel currently.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Vlaskas?
Um, I s- uh, you mentioned something with admin's agreement, but it it's fifty thousand years, that going away?
Which one's that, for the maintenance?
Well, it says uh admin's agreement, fina- uh, financial software.
Yeah, so we're not out of admins yet, so we'll be paying maintenance under it until we finally move off of that platform. This, this initiative, uh, Tyler's, it's a year minimum, well, if maybe this time next year, the finance piece should be up and running, but all of the other aspects of it, it's going to take a little bit longer to pound out.
Okay, so.
So we're, it'll be under maintenance probably for another year. Probably.
Are we ever going to get away from admins?
Hundred percent, yes, 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 I, we cannot continue to support these other ERPs, currently, we're holding up a uh IMS, which was prior to admins. Um, a system that probably is better than admins, and we've had, you know, that's been in the city probably twenty plus years, it's been with us. Admins was brought up in twenty fifteen sixteen, I think, previous administration as a upgrade, and unfortunately, it was not an upgrade, it was kind of a sideways, lateral move, we lost functionality, we lost the ability to online building permits, and this was back in twenty fourteen fifteen, when we were already doing that. Um, that didn't come back, as you're aware, until fully getting uh the ability to do that about a year and a half, two years ago. So there are some, there are some niceties on admins, but it was a lateral move that we went with, and it's, it's a closed system. It's not AD aware, active directory aware, everyone has a simple username, password, there's no multi-factor authentication, i- it doesn't talk to anything.
So you know me, this is, this is like, I go to you for, for everything when it comes to uh anything with IT, but tell me a little bit about our towers. Um, is any of our towers, um, because I know I've asked you, and you're saying that we, we've kind of add capacity with some of our towers adding to them.
Add capacity with bandwidth.
Add capacity?
Bandwidth, moving data back and forth. So currently, we're running, uh, with radios we have are five gigahertz radios, um, we're jumping up to a licensed six gigahertz band. And the radios themselves are actually an upgrade, so we'll be able to push more data through there, a higher, a higher bandwidth, both directions, so.
The towers that we have in place and that we are using is as, as we add more, I guess, more cells or what is it?
These are actually radios, these are point to point radios, so picture a big circle around the city with towers, so we have Harmon Road, which is a public safety tower. Um, Mount Plymouth Road is another public safety tower, that was added into the ring, that's the most recent one. Station three has a tower, we have a tower out at Station One. Uh, Station Four has a tower. Station Five, there's a tower, Lent Road, um, I think that's all five or six. And those radios, they all talk to each other in either direction, so if we ever lose a site on one direction, we can send data the other dr- other way. So we're not stuck, if we lose a radio, or if we lose a tower, we're not dead in the water, we send data the opposite direction.
And we're okay with all the towers right now?
The towers are fine, yes, there's nothing, the towers that are at the fire stations, those are purely an internal communication, we're not putting any cellular on there, there's no cell carriers on those.
So with the new fire station six, which tower would it be?
It's going to be a direct shot to Harmon Road, yeah, it's probably less than a mile straight shot to Harmon, it's a wide open shot, so that is the first one that's actually being upgraded.
So now, as we move further north, which tower are we using there?
It depends on where you're at, depends on where you're hitting here, so, uh, for instance, um, Northwest Rec, that center, it's hitting the tower at Station Five.
Okay, but with the new developments that we have going past Andridge and all that, what tower would that be using?
So there's no city infrastructure if that would hit anything up there, this is purely for internal network communications, voice data, um, so it wouldn't be benefiting anybody out in the public. So it's purely for us, now, the radio system, is that what you're asking?
Yeah.
For the actual officers and the fire? There would be the North Tower. And it could be one of many of Orange County's tower, now whether, now that we're on the multi-zone system that we acquired or jumped in about three years ago? Or not? Three years ago, roughly, we joined up with Orange County, so we run off Orange County's towers as well right now, so depending on where the officers and firefighters are, they're always going to hit a tower, and worst case, they'll have cellular.
Okay. So a, a, another concern that we have is actually in this chamber. Um, I do get a lot of complaints from those who are here in the chamber, and some that say that the audio is not very good for them.
Sure.
Um, and I actually have sat there through P and Z and DRC, and I find that I have to sit up front in order to kind of listen, because when you sit in the back, it kind of drowns out, you really don't hear, as you're speaking this way, we hear you, but sometimes the back doesn't hear you.
Yep.
Um.
That's, if that's some uh, something we like to do, or if that's a pleasure of the council, um, if that's, want to get added into it, I can look at it. Um, I want to say I've had quotes previously to do some kind of upgrade in here, it was close to seventy thousand. And that was to put additional speakers out here and putting some speakers up under, behind you, so you're able to hear the public as well. Unfortunately, the system we have, the mic currently is gated, I have no control over, you know, turning the volume up and down, so it's gated for the loudest speaker, so that they don't overdrive it. Um, Mr. McKinney, he's a good speaker. He probably doesn't need the mic, but it's, it truly, he is, he's going to be the one of the loudest ones, so I have to have it gated and not go too high on him. But if I get somebody comes in and just, and, and, you know, you know, here. So if you talk at a normal volume, you're going, usually you're going to get heard, but not everybody does, and sometimes they talk like this, and they turn their head. And, you know, you may hear it in here, but the stream has just now lost that volume. So this is truly getting it out in the stream, it's hitting the two arrays up here. Could we use some additional reinforcements? Yeah, if this was at the council would like to do it, and we want to add something in, and I can certainly have to make that happen.
All right, so I'm going to just kind of make a note, so how much would it cost? I mean, what would it cost be just to add some kind of speakers so that the back row, um, those that, that, you know, that, that come into the chamber, the back row can kind of hear it, for a lot of them, it's kind of muffled.
Speakers alone, um, I've had several different quotes looking to replace the Titan system we have here due to some issues. Um, speakers alone in the back was like seventeen or eighteen thousand, and it's because of the run they have to do, they've got to get back to the actual booth, which is on the other side of City Hall. So the speakers itself is not horrible, currently, you see some of the old speakers on the ceiling. Those will be replaced, um, I want to say it was additional six speakers they were going to put in, but it's actually getting them back into the system programmed and running the wires back that side, you know, where they sit at currently.
Okay.
So that is a down dirty, quick way of doing it, um, some enhancements up here, if we're looking to uh replace the Titan system, that's where it got a little higher.
Why would you want to replace that, what issues are we having?
So Titan's no longer, uh, I don't want to say they're not supported in the US, but you're not going to be able to get parts for it, so if we lose one of these consoles or one of these positions, we're going to be a mismatched system. So the thought was to go back to either a Shure or some sort of Crest Ron solution in front of you, a speaker and a audio, and then putting some sort of a touchscreen machine in front of you, similar to an iPad, but either a surface laptop, all still hooked into the system so that you're still seeing what's being presented, um, but not what you currently have.
Didn't we just get these replaced recently?
This system was done three and a half, four years ago, I think, is when it was done, but Titan's out of China, and the integrator said that they are not able to get parts anymore, and that they're not dealing with the US on these particular parts.
So should we start budgeting for that now, since these are a few years old?
Again, if there's funding, if that's something we want to do, then absolutely we can get it going.
Is that that seventy thousand dollar number you were saying?
That seventy thousand was to add um additional speakers out here, speakers behind you. Um, change out the existing uh mics in there going to a Shure system. Um, uh, monitor wise, that's something that we would come up with and integrate into it, but it'll still give you the same functionality you're having here, you would still see the presentation in front of you. We would just need to find a solution that we want to use there.
The other question is uh Wi-Fi um, available to our city residents. Remember, one time we had Wi-Fi, free Wi-Fi available.
Yeah, that, that unfortunately, they had, it just never worked, I just, they didn't, didn't have the throughput, and at the time, they were only giving a one megabit up and download speed. And that was if you could get it, if you're close enough to an access point, so that was shut down, I believe, under Kilch- Mayor Kilchheimer. Um, the cost to keep it running wasn't worth it, and of course, the hardware was already becoming obsolete at that point in time. So it's, it's a very expensive endeavor to try to keep up with that hardware, especially if we're trying to get the entire city, I, I want to say at the time, there was over a hundred access points to put throughout the city. And the idea was to have EMS running off of that. So, you know, transitioning from access point to access point, they would drop coverage on it. It just didn't work out as, as intended. So that was somewhat abandoned on the outside, we still use the Wi-Fi for the parks, um, Billy Dean Community Center, we put Wi-Fi out on the field out there. Uh, Kitten Lam Nelson Park has it, Northwest Rec, those areas where we have big gatherings have Wi-Fi. And if there's other locations that we would like to see it, that is condensed where there would be a larger population using it, not necessarily from your house, that's something we can certainly look at.
So like, when I go to Camp Weewat, I mean, there's no Wi-Fi there.
That's actually, um, uh, Mr. Yeah, uh, city administrator, uh, Radley, has an initiative he's given us to work with this, so we're going to work with public services and actually try to make that happen this fiscal year.
Cause you, you budgeted twelve thousand for that, correct, at Camp Weewat?
That was to increase the bandwidth, currently, there's a fifty meg circuit out there for city services, so that's another location that we have a VPN back into us, we have a Lumen circuit out there. And so that we have fiber coming in, we can actually do a adjustable type of a circuit out there, whether I need five hundred meg, two hundred, whatever type of an event's going on out there, saturation of how many people we can do on demand, turn it up and turn it down, so if we keep it low, you're paying a smaller fee, but that was to increase the existing circuit we have out there, moving forward.
The other thing with the social media, I think, I thought I saw something here. Um, boosting um on social media,
Mm-hmm.
there's actually, I don't know, I just saw it. Was it five thousand for boosting, like who?
I think that's what's on.
Who's utilizing the boosting?
So depending on what campaign they're doing, recreation does a lot of it, um, you know, some of the other departments, police and fire, depending on what campaign it is, and that's when we'll start boosting it.
So now, um, the city manages all our Facebooks, I rarely use it, because anytime I make an entry, it's always asking me, you want a boost? But then the boost is coming out of my funds, my personal.
If there was something you're doing, you know, city related.
I find that's a kind of a, a fine line, because it's the city Facebook that you manage, that's ours. Um, is, is the city's, so I don't see why I should pay for boosting, but you have here a five thousand dollar.
Yes.
So who does the boosting, I mean, is it just for the city?
It's done for the city, I, I don't know, I, I don't have to ask to get direction from the city administrator.
We asked for that, we put in there, so we can have different events that we can kind of boost it, social media for like presents and things, so we actually asked for that last year to put in the budget for the boost.
Okay. Yeah, as long as they, if I'm given direction to do that, absolutely.
Okay. All right.
Mr. Anderson?
That's it.
I have no questions, thank you for your presentation.
Sure.
I have one final one, sorry, the, the, um, the press table, is that, does that have the ability to have press connect to audio and plug in as needed?
This over here?
Yes.
Yeah, they can hook audio, they can hook audio and take an audio feed from us, there's a line out coming out of the wall.
And that works, and it functions, and?
Hundred percent.
Okay.
Yep.
I just want to make sure that's where it needs to be as well.
Yep.
Thank you.
Anything else, Commissioner Vlaskas? Good? No, I'm, I'm good. Anybody from the public, we should speak on this one?
Rod Olson, uh, thank you uh for your presentation, couple of questions. I've been in management forty seven years, twelve at the university, and thirty five years in healthcare. Every budget I ever looked at had five years of history, current year to date, and what the proposed budget was, side by side, so you can do a good job of predicting trends and so on and so forth. We don't have that, what do we need to do to get that? We've been, last year was a change up, this year we still don't have it, how do you look back and do that? Is there so- something IT can be doing to get this squared around for finance?
There's an Open Gov piece, um, that was initially brought in for that, I know Ms. Sherman spoke of it last night.
Okay, all right.
So I know Ms. Sherman spoke of this last night, um, talking about using that, I'm not sure exactly what's not working or what they're doing, I know they build the backend book from there, but I don't know exactly what issue is, if there's something that's not giving right numbers for her, I don't do the number portion. Um, I know that's what it was initially brought in for, was to show those side by side comparisons.
Okay, all right. Thank you, it's difficult, you're operating with an oar out of the water when you can't look at historical data, that's what I'd like to say, uh, with, with that. Um, yeah, and that, let's see what else, and, and what about the tie-in now, what's your tie-in or IT's tie-in with the water meter? Is that something your IT's tied with, or how does that work?
We haven't been tasked with tying into it, I've been asked to look at it, and look at some, you know, look at some of the coverage to see if we are having a coverage issue, like our north side. Um, we have some subdivisions out towards the Lake County line, Mount Dora area, that we're getting sporadic coverage. And so we were asked possibly go look and say, hey, you know, what are, what's your thoughts on this? And so when we start looking at houses in a subdivision, and you see, you know, five of them in a row, they're getting it, and then one that's not getting it, and then, you know, a couple more that not get it sparsely out there. Could it be coverage, could it be a lack of coverage from the tower, could it be busy, you know, there's a lot of variables that could be happening out there, but more unlikely it could be that the radio's not committing properly with the uh meter. Um, again, you know, anybody parking over their water meter could cause issues with it, now, that's not going to be a long term thing, if somebody's not getting readings for several months. There's more than likely either a programming issue or a coverage issue. As Ms. Sherman mentioned, we're trying to get the tower, there's an Orange County tower out, uh, they have an EVOX center out in Zellwood, actually, um, I think it's a Zellwood address. That I'm working on a interlocal agreement with the Orange County Radio Shop to get us onto that.
That I'm working on a interlocal agreement with the Orange County Radio Shop to get us onto that system. So that should help, but that's not going to fix every issue out there. Some of the things we did come across were the radios. Were not properly removed from the meters that were there, and there's a process for it. If you don't remove it, it still seems to think that is part of that, uh, radio, and then gets put back in storage and a new meter gets put on. And they're not getting communication from that. Um, looking into their systems, the census portal, we were seeing heartbeats coming back in that, okay, it is communicating, but it's not getting data because it doesn't know who it is. So I don't, and there was several hundred of those from talking to census that they found, and they tried to do a. A remote fix on those, to, you know, divorce the existing radios from the meters and put the proper radios that are on them so that they are talking in, but. There, there can be many issues of why the, uh, meters are not talking properly, unfortunately.
I thank you, Rob. And then my, uh, my standard four questions. Does this budget that you presented represent everything you, your department, your staff needs in the way of people, supplies, materials and equipment? To allow your staff to be successful in meeting the needs of the citizens of Apopka? Uh, is every piece of equipment in your department on a preventive maintenance plan?
It is. Um, we have asset lifecycle on the police department laptops, the desktops in the city servers, there is. There is a lifespan we use on them, so we do, and that's part of my budget. You'll see in there, there's a recycle refreshment in there for that. So all of our technology is current. Again, our software, um, excuse me, our hardware firewalls were just recently replaced. We are good with those for another, at least five years.
Super, super, very good. And is the PM plan adhered to?
Yes.
And do you spot check to make sure compliance? Thank you.
Anybody else?
Thank you, Rob.
Alright, thank you.
Hey, Mayor, before you go, I wanna.
You'll hand those out? Okay, well, I'll bring up, um, I guess Josh, you're gonna do streets and sanitation.
And did this update that you're, you're providing to us, are these online too?
Um, I just did, it's how it's the press.
Which one is that? We're doing sanitation and fleet.
What are these?
I know. He, this is the information we want to compare.
Okay, but it's the same thing, the same.
And then if you have your prior year vote, and I think Commissioner Anderson and Maleska is having is the same thing.
Oh, this one here is. Yeah, oh, okay. And.
But this is only going back one?
The email, right?
The email too.
But it's only going back one year, correct?
Going back to twenty?
Uh, twenty-four and twenty-five.
Yes.
So kind of year to date, and then FY twenty-four.
Yeah, twenty-five budget, twenty-four unedited. And the information in regards to that is in Open Gov. The problem that we're having is the links that we used to send out and the information pertaining to that. That data set is not correct.
Why not?
That is takes reconciled. That's what we're working on with Open Gov.
But doesn't it just take whatever you've input that's already reconciled?
Programming, it's programming. You have to build those data sets. It's not that simple.
But it didn't change from pri- previous years. We're using.
They can have new accounts, everything, things change.
So this will be placed online though for residents to see?
Yes.
Okay.
Josh?
Okay, Mayor, Commissioners, Josh Robinson, Public Services. Uh, tonight, talk about the fleet and sanitation services provided to the city. Um, sanitation, we have about, we have twenty-five positions, uh, one currently vacant. Uh, we collect about forty thousand, a little over forty thousand tons a year of waste in the city. Uh, notice the residential waste, twenty-one thousand tons, that's roughly equal to the number of homes. That's kind of a gauge, a thousand tons per home per year. Commercial waste, eleven thousand, that's interestingly enough, this is the first year since I've been here that it's actually increased. It's been flat for the last ten years and, uh, so the actual volume from the commercial businesses is, is starting to really show in the growth. And then fleet maintains a hundred and sixty, uh, pieces of heavy equipment, four hundred and forty-five. Pieces of rolling stock, vehicles, cars, that type of thing, garbage trucks, fire engines, and seven hundred and fourteen. Pieces of small equipment. Uh, Charlie and his team completed twenty-four hundred and eighty-six work orders last year. And, uh, we brought in fifty-eight new vehicles and surplus, or fifty-seven and surplus thirty-eight. Uh, between the two divisions, uh, sanitation makes up about eighty-three percent with nine point three million and fleet at one point nine million, seventeen percent. Between the two, again, the eleven point three million personnel makes up about thirty-seven percent of it. Operating expense, forty-four percent. Capitals, one garbage truck we're purchasing this year, and then six percent for the general fund transfer and eight percent for contingency. The highlights of the budget increases for this year, we're last, uh, sanitation will experience about a twenty-three percent increase. Uh, Orange County tipping fees is a big chunk of that. It's going up twelve percent this year on all the solid waste disposal. And I'm told we can expect twelve percent a year for the foreseeable future. And we also, of course, we're adding one, one operator, uh, one vehicle, one, one garbage truck. The garbage trucks went up, uh, s- significantly year over year. And, um, building the new shed to store the, our, uh, garbage can, container inventory. Uh, fleet actually show a reduction, about thirteen percent, uh, largely due to he's, doesn't need capital this year. And, uh, he, he has, uh, asked, or asked for a mechanic and a maintenance worker to add to the staff there. Any questions?
Any questions for Josh?
Sure. How many homes are we servicing right now?
About twenty thousand, uh, we're expecting twenty-one thousand, just over twenty-one thousand next year.
So we're doing twenty-one thousand, you're saying plus? The other question was, how many trucks do we have?
Twenty-seven, twenty-seven altogether, yeah, spares and frontline and support vehicles.
We have twenty-seven. Do we have any rentals?
We're using two rentals right now. Uh, one's a short-term rental and one is. A long-term rental that I got a call from the, from the next gen dealer, um, he's looking to deliver two of our rear loaders in September. So that'll get that rental off our, off our books.
I know we use the labor for the extra personnel. We still doing that too?
We, yes, we use temp labor for the workers on the yard waste collection, the manual collection.
Well, there it is. I was, that's what I was looking for. So the temporary labor, regular hours. Which, it says here, two hundred and fifty-seven thousand, and that's a year that we're spending on that?
Yeah, we say temp labor, but there, I call them permanent temps. Yeah, we have, we have, uh, at least four temp. On a normal.
On a normal day.
On a normal day, we have two trucks that have two temps on each truck. And then during the springtime, we have three trucks with two on each truck.
So on a, on a daily basis, like how many trucks go out on a daily basis?
Uh, we, we launch.
Twenty. It was, oh, twenty-seven.
Well, that includes spares and support. So we launch, uh, sixteen routes a day.
Okay.
Two of them are yard waste that utilize the, the temp help.
And then you have, yeah, fifteen thousand for additional temps. What is YW season? Oh, is that just the way you have it written here? Additional temps, YW season, two additional temps in spring.
Yeah, that's, in the springtime, the volumes, uh, increase so much that we add an extra truck and, and we have two extra temps during that roughly three months.
What does bad debt mean? Dead, five thousand, bad debt. What does that mean?
Like for any fees that are not paid and receivables, sometimes we have to write that off at the end of the year. If it's been outstanding for a long period of time and it's uncollectible, we typically after so many years write it off, and that is considered bad debt.
Also, and the city kind of absorbs that.
Absorption, yes.
What's a bad debt? Like, give me an example.
Say, for instance, if you had a creditor and you don't pay your, your credit card bill, it becomes what they call a bad debt.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Just so you know, that number has decreased a lot. A couple of years back, we switched Shalley North to, uh, direct billing. Instead of one big master bill, that dropped the bad debt way down. There was a lot of.
Mrs. Sherman, can you point me to the new documents you presented to us, where sanitation is on this?
Sanitation? It, go to the, um. Page sixteen? In the back, no, in the new documents.
The new ones?
Yes, because that's where I'm at. Go to the back tab, like the, almost the last one. Just before the second one before the last one. What page is that? And go to the, to the back of it.
Four, two, thirty-two, ten. Okay, thank you.
You find it?
Yes.
It's in this one.
Thank you.
Yeah, what I have in here. Sorry, we didn't have time to.
No, it's good. I just, I was looking for, that helped, so thank you. It got me right where I needed to be.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Yeah, last year, well, actually, no, it was this year previously, you had presented at one point that we were going to increase fees based on. Kind of use almost, uh, and then that kind of went away. Where did that go or was that still the plan or what happened with that?
That, uh, I, well, a couple of things. We're doing an increase.
Yes.
With, uh, based on the, uh, consultant for the overall program. They did a study. And so with that, and after I, uh, reviewed the, uh, code more closely. A lot of what I want is already there, uh, and so we just have to enforce it and, and bill per the code, city code ordinance and then. So between, basically, I've let, kind of let that live because we did the more overarching rate increases.
Itself.
Based on the, uh, consultant.
But then you are, you will be implementing kind of new strategies or policies?
We'll be, we'll, we'll be recording and billing the, these large excessive piles per the code.
And that's like one-off, so if it's, it, as needed.
They're one-offs as needed, right. It's just, just to kind of help keep everyone honest and.
Yeah.
Not, not abuse the system.
Absolutely.
But we have means to do that, that really already had our.
So policy, or not policy, but that ordinance is already in place for that to, for your team to.
Is it just the practice over the years had gotten away from, from it, and we weren't billing to the extent we could for a lot of those type services?
So as I mentioned earlier, yesterday, um, we do have a fifteen percent increase factored. Into this budget to support the expenses that you're looking at. Now, in addition to that, if you can recall. With sanitation, we're trying to build the reserves. There's seven, three, four lines are in here where we're really trying to build up the reserves. And sanitation is one of those, and that's why you see that contingency there. Because it, it needs to happen.
So you're just putting in a nine hundred and fifty thousand dollar contingency to build back reserves in this fund?
Yes.
Can you point me in this packet to where it shows me what the current reserve level is?
No, I can't. It's not in this package, but I can give you what that is.
Yeah, be great.
Give me a minute.
Any other questions for Josh?
Uh, I, I noticed that, uh, fleet has asked for two additional positions, uh, with the, uh, growth. In population in the city, sanitation doesn't need an additional personnel?
We, we did. We're asking for one additional operator. Uh, uh, yeah, I don't think, I don't know if it showed up on there.
I didn't see that one.
But yes, that is, uh. So there is one additional operator and one additional truck to, to add, uh, a collection route.
This, it's on your new position list information, but it is factored in the budget.
And what's the transfer to general fund?
Um, same, it, just like we do from Fund Four-O-One to cover overhead because of the support that admin staff provides to sanitation. Same thing for utility operations.
Yeah, it's also like a million dollars for somewhere in that, seven-figure number for like utility side.
Yeah.
About nine.
It's the status quo. It's the same amount each year. We have not increased that amount.
So that, well, I'm not seeing it in twenty twenty-four. But I am seeing.
Twenty twenty-four, you don't see it because that was the year where we had some serious problems with sanitation and they couldn't afford it. So it kind of got combined with four oh one, increased four oh one.
Okay, so we've only done that one year then? It was last year?
It was going on prior to then. It was just that one year they couldn't absorb.
It's about six hundred and eighty thousand.
Yes, so.
Okay, so, so it's, it's paying for services that are outside the department effectively?
Payroll, fleet.
Okay.
Yeah, purchasing everything, admin, HR. Everything that feeds into that.
Oh, so I see the transfer that you have here that go, goes to the general fund, six hundred and eighty thousand?
Yes, ma'am.
Who recommends that? Who recommends how much you take from an enterprise and put it in general, at the general fund?
Well, currently, we, we work with the rate analyst that we have to, you know, to determine if that, it costs is appropriate. So they are increasing it in the model, but we're not increasing it in the budget. So we're actually under what we should be, because we're trying to stay, the mayor has tried to stay at the same level. And not increase that cost, even though in actuality, that cost is increasing, because we know that these funds, you know, need. As much revenue as they can have. So I work, I work with the rate consultant. They have a methodology.
So they're recommending, what number are they recommending?
Um, I'd have to go back. They'll be here and you, when, when they go over the model, I'm looking for the twenty-second date if everybody is available and they can give you that information. I think, to be honest with you, if I can recall correctly, I think it's a five percent increase that they were recommending.
And just kind of an annual increase like that?
And we're not doing that.
So wouldn't, I mean, if they're recommending it, we're paying them to tell us what to, they're the professionals in the industry. Are we kicking the can down the road so we're gonna have to see a major increase?
Well, in this particular fund, you're trying to build reserves. You wanted to know the fund balance? The fund balance right now for this fund is a negative three point two million.
Negative?
Yes.
So we're not trying to build it, we're trying to get it back?
We're trying to get out of the hole and build, yes. Based on. That's over the years. Over the various years, things, I guess, cost increases, thing coming, items coming in higher, you know, than anticipated. I can only speak for the last two or three years. But we're trying to recover. This is not new. This is information that I shared with you when we did the, um, Doge letter. Right, the information is there. And some of it is non-cash related expenses, like obligations such as pension obligations and those type things. But yet still, you want to be in a positive balance.
So.
Negative.
Yeah, and that's a substantial negative. Are you able to provide us a historical breakdown of this fund year over year past?
How many years?
You're gonna give me a face about like ten years? Can you give me a ten-year break? No, I don't need.
I will give you.
Lineups, but twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen.
Yes.
So we can kind of see.
But I can't give it to you by tomorrow.
Uh, I understand. It's just where, where do we get off the rails? I, in a seven-figure range. Cause even with the nine fifty back, so is a three point two million, the negative three point two million i- in reserves of this fund. Is that calculating the nine fifty that we're gonna be adding into it? Or when we add nine fifty, when we do the contingency, that'll go down to two point. Whatever, two point three million?
It's, it's without that. We have to first receive the nine fifty in twenty-six. We haven't received it yet. That's, that's, you know, so we're balancing this budget, okay, and building a contingency. So it should go down in the future if we receive all the revenue that we're anticip- anticipating.
Yeah, twenty, what, five, five-year plan to get it back flush.
Correct.
With the, uh. Rate increases and the cost expectations.
And does that, this number that nine fifty, is that what the consultant is recommending? Did they give a number to us?
Oh, yes, they, they did. Actually, it was. Oh, yes, they, they did. Actually, it was probably a, a little bit higher, but yeah.
So we hire a consultant and then don't do what they recommend us to do?
We have to increase the rates a little bit more to cover some of these expenses. Basically, the only reduction that we have is for that new position. Off of the number that they gave.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Can anybody from public which speak?
Albert McKimmey, three six oh three Gold Gem Road. With the uh types of building developments that we're now seeing coming into Popka, we see a lot of buildings that are multi-story buildings. Uh, does the method of collection change when you have a multi-story building? I know back in the U K, when we have multi-story buildings, we have communal trash cans. If we have to have communal trash cans in these multi-story buildings, do we look to have to uh have capital items in terms of machinery to collect larger bins? Because we're not ordering any and there's now a lot of new multi-story developments coming online.
Anybody else?
Rod Olson, thirty one fifty six Rolling Hills Lane. Uh, Josh, uh, you, Charles, your staff. I have my interaction with the uh fleet maintenance and with uh sanitation that maybe some people do, but it's always nice. They're always got a smile on their face. They greet you. They let you know things like, hey, we're trucked down and we won't be collecting recyclables next week. It's all helpful information. Appreciate it. Uh, I was also, I pointed out a couple of months ago that we have the multiple vehicles that have been sitting there for months on end, sometimes years at Gillen Training Center, Northwest Recreation Conference, and Fleet Fleet. Thank you guys for clearing out some of that. I know getting that off the inventory is no easy task. Uh, I noticed in the fire vehicle, uh, or the fire department's budget, uh, does relate here. This is fire vehicle maintenance, thirty five thousand dollars is a new budget item. It says temporary. And uh, and I know in past, we took, the fire department took a gig on the aspect of although all the work was properly performed on the vehicles, the back axle person doing it wasn't certified. Is that person now certified? Is there a plan to get that done?
Who's speaking? Oh, okay. I didn't, I'm like, who's? So Charles, um, would you do me a favor and kind of repeat that here? Because we do have a public that's listening? Thank you.
Charles Stevenson, Fleet Superintendent. And right now, we do have an E B T and A S E Master Certified Mechanic on staff for equipment and emergency vehicles.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, and I guess a question for the fire chief, but for you. You, Josh, my typical question, does the budget you just presented represent everything you need for your department, for your staff needs? By the way, have people supplies, materials, equipment to allow your staff to be successful in meeting the needs of citizens of a popka? Is every piece of equipment in your department on a preventive maintenance plan? All right, thank you. And is the P M maintenance plan followed or here too?
Yes.
I know you can't get gas if you run past the hours. And, and do you personally spot check for complaints?
I do and two others in my department.
Thank you.
Anybody else? All right.
Mayor, before we move on, I do want to share in this, um, in regards to the fleet. We do have incorporated um the fleet facility.
Right.
Building, so we doing that as a loan. So I want to go after a loan for that. It's about six million dollars. So I do have that debt service reflected in it.
So wait a minute.
Can you point us to that? In the paperwork?
It's in the general fund?
Oh, it's in the general.
Yeah, it's just not, it's not, it's in your book, but it's not in the power plant, but it's in the general fund.
Understood, yeah. Where in?
In the nine eleven. Go to the back. Can you see ninety eleven? Page seventy three of seventy three of that first book. I mean, of the book I gave you today, of all, Josh.
Oh, it's in the book of today?
Yes, ma'am. So this is new.
Page seventy three. Oh my God. I'm going to go up here.
So based on my discussion with our financial advisor, I estimated um rate was five percent at fifteen years, but again, we don't know what it's going to come in at. That would be a annual payment of about five sixty nine, three seventy one. You see it?
All right.
No, hold on.
Wait a minute. You're saying page seventy three?
Yes, of go to the front of the book, the first half.
On the, yeah, what she just provided today.
Okay, but that's the same one that's online.
That's the same one I emailed you.
Okay, so I'm looking at that one. It's as if I'm.
You're looking at the email?
Yes.
Okay.
And it's page seventy three?
Yes, but you got to, yeah. General fund should be the first on the email. But the, the, the amount is five sixty nine, three seventy one. So we'll be looking into that in the upcoming fiscal year as well.
So that's for half a million dollars a year just for debt service?
Yes.
It's a six million dollar bond that we're getting?
Loan, yes.
For fifteen year, you said?
Fifteen years at five percent.
And that's based, it's, so it's fleet maintenance. What financials, this is just for my information, what like financials do they look at?
This is general fund.
It's general fund, so look at that fund, okay.
Yes.
Is this part of the, that hundred million dollar, hundred twenty million dollar like bond that we?
No, it's not a part.
So this is a separate component to that? Okay. So I guess what's the timeline with that building? What does that look like?
In regards to the construction of it, I don't, I don't have that, but I will say this. I will not be able to go out until January of twenty twenty six because of what we've done with um Emerson Park.
You have certain timelines that you have to, like a, a?
Annual so much.
What's that? Is it a timeline of being able to apply for a, a loan or a bond, or is it a dollar amount?
It's um a five million dollar amount within a year um to avoid arbitrage or, or something like that. So I got to wait to the next calendar year.
Calendar year, okay.
So keep it tax exempt and all that. Did we know that before we agreed to Emerson Park?
She did. You, you, you actually did tell us that. You did say that it will affect the city's bond.
Yeah, we did say that. Yes.
She did advise us on that.
What I'm trying not to do is make that, change that debt. You know what I'm saying? If it goes over five million, then it, it jeopardizes um the, the status of tax exempt, and that's what I'm trying not to do.
Walk me through it again.
And I will have the financial advisor give you an update on that, but that's my understanding. That you have a, a maximum of five million dollars per year, and I guess it's calendar year of tax exempt, something along those lines. And that, and if they, if we change that, if I go out before October, then I have to do something different with it, something, it, it affected in some manner.
Okay, did we, have we done any type of uh planning for this? Do we have an architect on this already that has done the?
The project itself?
Yes, we're, we're almost finished with that. Well, by the end of this fiscal year, we'll have the construction drawings.
Okay, and so that we'll have the money probably January, February?
We just can't issue it, so we can start the process.
I understand.
We just have to make sure we issue it in there.
Okay, and then, and that's coming out of fleet maintenance's budget, or is that a general fund budget?
It's a general fund. It's fleet maintenance building, but it's general fund debt.
Understood, okay. And then what's the timeline, I guess, to finish that building?
Uh, we're, we're estimating about a year for construction, yeah.
So twenty seven. And then what will that building provide for fleet?
Oh, it'll provide him, well, it'll provide him twenty thousand square foot feet. A bridge crane where he can remove large components from the vehicle equipment. He can actually work on a fire truck or a garbage truck inside of a building. It'll, it'll, it'll add room for expansion in terms of number of lifts, so he can continue to add uh mechanics as we grow for, you know, this, this will be, probably get us through the next, what, fifty years of growth uh in terms of fleet maintenance, you know, so it's, yeah, it's a big, it's a big boost.
Yeah, so i- is it on the same pad or in that same exact area that?
It's, it's on the, if you're coming into uh public services, that field on the right. It'll be there.
It's going to be on that side then. Okay, understood. How many square feet do we have now with that?
What, two, two fifty by hundred buildings, so yeah.
So double the size if not more? Oh, wow. Okay, so it's going to be substantially more. Okay.
Well, that'll also free up those buildings for streets and stormwater and sanitation to spread out in as well, so.
Understood. Okay, thank you.
Anything else? All right, on to utility operations.
Mrs. Sherman, can you tell us where utility operations is in this book? Just want to get ahead of it.
Because they are ordered by the fund, so that's four oh one.
Utility.
Just before sanitation, which was the second to the last, it's the third to the last.
This is four oh one?
Yes.
Okay.
This is four oh one. Well, he's it. All right.
You want to just, you want to take them in?
Yes.
Okay, take them in there too?
Yeah.
You'll be right back.
All right.
Time for my nerds.
Quick enough?
All right. All right, are we, we're all good? All right, everybody took a bathroom break. That must be, it's going to be a long time here now. Anyways, uh, before I get started, I just want to let you know I'll be presenting the utilities uh operation budget here. On the capital projects and all, Vladimir Simonovsky, our public works director, will be coming up and, and addressing those on capitals, just so that where I'll be strictly just on the operation side, so. And with that, we'll get started. Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, Glenn Brooks, Utilities Operations Director. We're presenting to you this evening the proposed twenty five, twenty six operating budget for the Utilities Operations Department consisting of the following divisions. I guess I should move that. The following divisions, administration, thirty ten, water plant, thirty one eleven, wastewater plant, thirty one twenty one, plants maintenance, thirty one ninety one, utilities water maintenance, thirty one forty one, and utilities sewer maintenance, thirty one seventy one. The group is comprised of seventy eight full-time staff members, some who are here in attendance here this evening and will assist with this presentation and questions that you may have. Some of the key budget highlights from this current fiscal year are the following. Two thousand two hundred and seventy four meters replaced, four hundred and six backflows converted, collected and analyzed three thousand three hundred and fifty samples to ensure safe drinking water, performed six thousand four hundred and eighty utility locate tickets, two thousand five hundred and thirty nine service requests, one hundred and sixty seven weekly lift station inspections, eleven thousand plus customer calls answered, treated and distributed one point five billion gallons of wastewater, distributed two point seven billion gallons of potable water and three point four billion gallons of reclaimed water. The Utilities Operation Department budget is forty million, oh two seven, five six three. Thirty one seventy one wastewater maintenance makes up thirty one percent of the Utilities Operating Budget at twelve million, five five five, oh oh six. Thirty one twenty one wastewater plant makes up twenty percent of the Utilities Operation Budget at eight million, oh nine five, six seven two. Thirty ten administration makes up nineteen percent of the Utilities Operations Budget at seven million, four thirty three. Thirty-one-twenty-one wastewater plant makes up twenty percent of the Utilities Operation Budget at eight million, oh-nine-five, six-seven-two. Thirty-ten administration makes up nineteen percent of the Utilities Operations Budget at seven million, four-thirty-three, six-six-one. Thirty-one-forty-one water maintenance makes up seventeen percent of Utilities Operating Budget at six million, six-eight-five, zero-one-zero. And thirty-one-eleven water plant makes up eight percent of Utilities Operating Budget at three million, one-six-four, four-seven-three. And thirty-one-ninety-one plant maintenance makes up five percent of the Utilities Operation Budget at two million, oh-nine-three, seven-four-one.
Before we move off that, it, the, labeling those funds is very helpful, can you give me the, the wastewater maintenance fund again? And then the water maintenance as well, please?
Okay, yes, the wastewater maintenance fund, thirty-one-seventy-one.
Thank you.
Makes up thirty-one percent of Utilities Operation Budget, and that's at twelve million, five-five-five, oh-oh-six.
And then the water maintenance, what's that fund number?
Uh, thirty-one-seventy-one.
For water maintenance, not wastewater?
Oh, I'm sorry, uh, water maintenance, uh, water maintenance, thirty-one-forty-one.
Thirty-one-forty-one, okay, perfect, thank you.
Did you need that number too?
No, 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 I was just, that, I'm drawing it on the pie here to understand it and helps me to go back and forth, thank you.
Yes, sir. Um, how the funds break down for Utilities Operations is this, uh. Move the page. At the right spot. Nope. Sorry, get this, okay. For some reason, forty percent, fifteen million, nine-seventy-one-ninety-five is for operating. Twenty-four percent, nine million, six-five-four is for capital. Twenty percent, eight million, oh-three-one, three-eight-two is for personnel. Sixteen percent, six million, two-four-one, four-five-three is transfers to the general fund from administration thirty-ten. And a hundred and thirty thousand roughly, five-thirty-three is attributed to debt services. Key changes or budget increases in the following year. Utility administration. There's a two point four percent increase. This increase is attributed to asset management software being moved under thirty-ten's budget, due solutions. And requesting of a forklift to replace the aging piece of equipment we have at the warehouse. Water plants, there's a zero point five percent decrease. This decrease is due to the removal of four hundred thousand from professional services. For construction inspections for the well deepens at Großenbacher and Plymouth Regional. This will be handled by Public Works Engineering Division. Wastewater plant, there's a twenty-four point five percent increase. This increase is attributed to lab analysis, cost increase, capital funding for the Golden Gem, and North Shore Pump Station repairs. I want to note, there is a two million increase added to line forty-six-hundred repair and maintenance. And this is for the Golden Gem pond liner repair.
Let me, now that you've even mentioned Golden Gem, I mean. Two million is just the liner, what, what are we talking about overall cost of it?
Yes, ma'am, and I, I don't wanna get in depth in that because Vladimir Simonovsky is gonna bring that in his presentation, uh, that is for the liner.
What was the increase that you said for the liners themselves?
Yes, ma'am, it was line forty-six-hundred. Repair and maintenance, there was two million, there's two million budgeted there for the liner. Yes, ma'am. And again, Vladimir will be bringing up these in his presentation. Plant maintenance, six point six percent increase. This increase is attributed to adding an HVAC annual maintenance contract. And an interior asset software. And add maintenance shop supplies and special I two tools for motor and generator repairs. Water maintenance, there's a thirty-five percent increase. This increase is attributed to additional restoration repairs to include fire hydrant maintenance. Meter and backflow supplies. A bestest engallinized water main replacement along with the placement of several vehicles. Here's the one, don't kill the messenger. Wastewater maintenance, there's a hundred and eighteen point five percent increase. The increase is attributed to SCADA RTU cellular conversion. VACcon rental. Miscellaneous reclaim and rehab replacement projects, the Apopka Terrace lateral rehab, again, Vladimir will be bringing that up in his presentation. SCADA RTU cabinets and the replacement of one of our F-three-fifties and the big one here. Being master lift station number seventeen, at a cost of four point six million.
Which one is that master, the master lifts, where is that one at?
Frank Carlton.
That's the Frank Carlton?
Yes, ma'am.
Lift station.
Yes, ma'am.
Can you give me that number again?
Yes, ma'am, four point six million, so just so I wanna get the breakdown, it's, there's four point six million that's funded here that will come from four oh one fund. And there also will be two point five million that will come from the four oh three fund, so seven point one million. Blanch will correct me if I'm wrong, but that's correct, all right, she gave me a thumbs up.
Four oh one is, what's the difference between these two funds, can you remind me, please?
Operating versus capital.
Yeah, four oh one is your operating, repair, maintenance, you know, for repairs to existing infrastructure, four oh three is impact fee. So, uh, some of that funding will come due to upsizing of the lift station for, for the new group.
Thank you.
That is it for the presentation. Questions I know you may have?
I, I do have a couple of questions, thank you for the presentation. The overtime pay saw a small decrease. Again, one of my pain points from last budget is that we didn't have enough overtime in each department, so I just wanna make sure that. We're, it's not a huge decrease, but it's still a decrease, are you, that's adequate?
I, I do think so, Commissioner, uh, we've done some restructuring here, um, I do think sometimes the overtime that, as we was looking at, we think that we can. The way that we are staffing, uh, particularly sewer maintenance, water maintenance, and on-call rotation, that, uh, we can cut down a lot on the, on the overtime, um. Uh, we feel, so, um, and I do, and I know, speaking from wastewater plant and, uh, uh, water plants and all that, I think overtime really, if you look at that, was kind of a minimum of what we do, we do have callouts. I think where the big one is, is, uh, is sewer maintenance, water maintenance, lift station, and stuff like that, and, uh. But again, we have done a reorganization, I know we'd set down, you know, could look in, and we do feel that, uh, that we'll be able to cut down.
Okay, thank you, and then the other one, so the, the transfer to general fund, uh, it's a decrease. From two years ago by about seven hundred thousand.
Which is the one that was sanitation, as I explained to you earlier.
Walk me through that again, the, the why?
It's in twenty-twenty-four, when we were doing the budget, the sanitation fund, again, was a budget, uh, a fund that, you know, didn't have the revenue to support it, so. Basically, we did not take the transfer from the sanitation fund, we just increased.
So you took it from this fund?
Increased the one there. That was in twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five, it went back, and then twenty-twenty-six is going back.
So, it, I mean, it's somewhat of a, I mean, it's not, because we're not reimbursing this fund, but it's somewhat of a, one fund is paying the other fund. Covering the cost of another fund.
Our one fund is not paying a cost, and another fund is paying probably the cost that it should have been paying.
So. Wha- am I to infer then that we are underfunding this general fund transfer then?
Again, as we discussed previously, the rate consultant is recommending a five percent increase each year. We're keeping it at the same level. Because we're dealing with.
You're doing that across the board on all general fund transfers?
It, for the, from the enterprise funds, yes, from the four oh one, from the four oh two, you know, all of the, all of the transfers to the general fund.
Can you point me to where reserves are listed on here?
They're not listed.
Or I guess where we're funding?
Yeah.
What we're funding?
That's in your revenue side.
So that last? Is it the last one we were just, uh, can you point me, last tab or the second to last tab?
If you go by fund, the first page in that book is the revenue for each fund. So if you're looking for four oh one. The first page in the tab is the revenue for the whole entire fund, four oh one.
Okay, but what are we contributing to, uh, the reserves of this?
We're balancing, we're balancing this budget right here with a, um, the fifteen point five percent increase, and. We're currently projecting to be in a positive manner, a positive position, about three million. So we're trying to, hopefully those rates will increase those reserves, this rate increase.
Where are we at right now in that, I guess, in four oh one, with its current reserves the way that it is?
That's what I'm saying, it's a positive now, we're projecting it to be a positive about three million dollars.
So you're, three million dollars more than where we're at now? Or three million dollars?
Three million dollars.
So what's it at now? How much do we have in reserves in four oh one currently today?
I can't tell you today, I can tell you as of nine-thirty, twenty-twenty-four, and give you a projection for twenty-twenty-five.
That'd be great.
Okay, give me a minute.
Similar to what you did for, whatever you provided for with sanitation?
I got it.
That's similar number.
For four oh one. As I mentioned, as of nine-thirty, twenty-twenty-five, we're projecting three point five million. As the estimated balance, positive. So we're not trying to dig into that, we're trying to build that.
So that'll go to six and a half is what we're expecting?
No, I can't say to go six and a half, but I'm expecting it to increase. Because we're balancing the budget without using any reserves that we do not have, basically. So if our expenses come in less than what they normally would do, that helps us build those reserves.
I understand.
You following me?
See, but I thought you had said we're gonna have three million dollars more with this rate increase, more than where we're at now?
No, 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 I was just saying, the rate increase is supporting this budget. That fifteen percent rate.
I'm not sure that's what you just said, but. I, I asked, are we at a zero, so we're gonna have three million, you said, no, we're positive, so this is three million dollars more with this new rate study that we.
No, 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 we're at, I, I understood you to say, where are we now, and that's what we're projecting to be now.
Three and a half?
That's what I was answering.
So then where do we expect to be with this budget in place at the end of?
If the, if the expenses come in less than budget, and I, I don't know what that is going to be, whatever that is, that will help us build the reserves, and the revenue comes in, if I. The revenues come in as planned, expenses come in less than budget, it, that would help us build that reserve balance.
I mean, yeah, I understand, I understand surplus, I get that, I understand credits and debits, it's, I. I mean, aren't we needing to understand when we start applying for different projects and things of that nature, what our anticipated kind of reserves will be?
When you talk, applying for debt or something?
Correct, I assume we're gonna need debt to do some of these projects, I know we're not there yet, but.
Yeah, and that's when we talked about, that's why we're trying to build reserves, so we can get in a position where we can borrow debt, similar to where we are with the general fund. The general fund has twenty-five percent plus in reserves, these funds do not, and that's why we, they were in the negative, and so we're trying to pull them into the positive.
But this one's not in the negative?
Not now, budgetarily, last year, we were projecting, but when it came in as of nine-thirty, twenty-twenty-four. Again, because they're not spending as much as they planned, we're now building. So I take the twenty-twenty-four balance, I look at what we budgeted in twenty-twenty-five, including like the budget amendments and stuff like that, and that's where we are.
Three and a half million.
That's as of, the estimated balance as of nine-thirty, twenty-twenty-five.
Okay. Okay.
Estimate.
I understand, I understand it's not, and that's, and it's just helpful to understand kind of where we're going.
I understand, it's, it's a lot, it takes a lot, it's projecting and planning, so.
Okay.
Always start with the audited balances.
And that's three, three point five is for four oh one?
Yes.
Okay, now four oh three, what do we have in that?
Four oh three, estimated as of nine-thirty, twenty-twenty-five is twenty-six million. Any other questions?
Commissioner Smith?
Good.
Good, Commissioner Blaskas?
I'm still looking at some of the stuff there, but if any questions come up, we can always go back.
Okay, Mr. Anderson?
No, not right now, thank you.
Okay, come on now.
I'm sorry, give me a second. I'm sorry, give me a minute. I apologize, give me a quick second.
I, I asked, are we at a zero, so we're gonna have three million, you said, no, we're positive, so this is three million dollars more with this new rate study that we.
No, 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 we're at, I, I understood you to say, where are we now, and that's what we're projecting to be now.
Three and a half?
That's what I was answering.
So then where do we expect to be with this budget in place at the end of?
If the, if the expenses come in less than budget, and I, I don't know what that is going to be, whatever that is, that will help us build the reserves, and the revenue comes in, if I. The revenues come in as planned, expenses come in less than budget, it, that would help us build that reserve balance.
I mean, yeah, I understand, I understand surplus, I get that, I understand credits and debits, it's, I. I mean, aren't we needing to understand when we start applying for different projects and things of that nature, what our anticipated kind of reserves will be?
When you talk, applying for debt or something?
Correct, I assume we're gonna need debt to do some of these projects, I know we're not there yet, but.
Yeah, and that's when we talked about, that's why we're trying to build reserves, so we can get in a position where we can borrow debt, similar to where we are with the general fund. The general fund has twenty-five percent plus in reserves, these funds do not, and that's why we, they were in the negative, and so we're trying to pull them into the positive.
But this one's not in the negative?
Not now, budgetarily, last year, we were projecting, but when it came in as of nine-thirty, twenty-twenty-four. Again, because they're not spending as much as they planned, we're now building. So I take the twenty-twenty-four balance, I look at what we budgeted in twenty-twenty-five, including like the budget amendments and stuff like that, and that's where we are.
Three and a half million.
That's as of, the estimated balance as of nine-thirty, twenty-twenty-five.
Okay. Okay.
Estimate.
I understand, I understand it's not, and that's, and it's just helpful to understand kind of where we're going.
I understand, it's, it's a lot, it takes a lot, it's projecting and planning, so.
Okay.
Always start with the audited balances.
And that's three, three point five is for four oh one?
Yes.
Okay, now four oh three, what do we have in that?
Four oh three, estimated as of nine-thirty, twenty-twenty-five is twenty-six million.
But that's exclusively, the only time we can use those funds for three is for expansion.
Expansion, yeah, impact fee for expansion.
Okay. All right.
Any other questions? Commissioner Smith?
Good.
Good, Commissioner Blaskas?
I'm still looking at some of the stuff there, but if any questions come up, we can always go back.
Okay, Mr. Anderson?
No, not right now, thank you.
Okay, come on now.
Album McKemay, C-six-oh-three, Golden Gem Road. Budget requires to be based on facts, not on fantasy or supposition. Over the months, I have given to commissioners or made available to commissioners documentation which originated from within the city. This documentation will state that on March, I believe, of September twenty, of twenty-twenty-four. The city applied to St. John's for an extension to Golden Gem Road. That extension requested that St. John's would allow the continuation of the project until September of twenty-twenty-seven. Recently, Cliff Shepard announced that we actually managed to succeed in getting a nine-month extension. That's only two years less than what we asked for. We're asking for two million dollars in the budget for liners. With due respect, a year ago on May the fifteenth, we gave Devo Engineer nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars to work in Golden Gem Road. What I would like to know, where in the budget does it tell us what was actually done there? Because my recollection, recollection, there was three main things that we were asked to do. One of them was to provide, uh, aquadams, one of them was an interceptor trench, and one was to plug a hole. The hole was plugged, no interceptor trench was dug, and aquadams were never purchased, not that the aquadams were ever required. So what happened to that nine hundred and fifty K, where is it within the terms of last year's budget? What do we now need to spend, because two million dollars, you're, it's laughable. You actually paid four mil, almost four million dollars for the liners when they put in. If you go and look at Golden Gem Road today, which I'm sure most of you haven't done. With the recent rains, the damage to that facility is absolutely horrendous. Because there was no interceptor trench put in, and in Devo's engineer report, he mentioned that runoff water from the road was coming down. And in my opinion, that's what initially caused the sinkhole, it was runoff water ingressing under the liner. So we're now in a position where we've got huge amounts of drainage that we're gonna have to do on Golden Gem Road. I would imagine by the time you remove the liner, if you see the conditions of the liners now, it's probably gonna cost you five hundred K just to get in there and start it. Remember, you guys have got time constraints, both from FDIP and from St. John's, you're not gonna be able to meet those time constraints. If you don't meet the time constraints, St. John's can ask you to return four point five million dollars for the, for the money that they donated to the city for the facility. Bear in mind now that we've had three extensions, and there's no way that we will be anywhere near putting this plant back into operation, and the time scales that, that. We're, we're speaking about today is absolute fantasy, so be aware that we have ten million dollars in compound interest, that if we have to give back Golden Gem Road, that's where you're at, guys.
Anybody else? Okay. All right, next up, Public Works.
Good evening, everyone, Vladimir Simonovsky, Public Works Director and City Engineer.
Did you speak up?
Yes. Yeah, let me bring it closer. I'll be introducing, introduce, introducing the Public Works Department budget for the fiscal year twenty twenty five, twenty six. And I will give some clarifications on the Golden Gem issue later. Uh, during the presentation for the capital improvement program. The Public Works Department is now organized into five divisions, each designed to address specific infrastructure needs. Uh, we have administration, engineering, which is now divided into three sections, utilities, transportation, stormwater, and development review. We also have the construction management division, the GS and asset management division, which is a new division. And the streets and stormwater operations and maintenance, which is divided into streets, operation maintenance, stormwater operation maintenance. And traffic operation maintenance that takes care of all the traffic signals and other traffic issues. The total operating budget of the Public Works Department for fiscal year twenty twenty five, twenty six is proposed to be twelve million eight hundred eighty seven thousand and eight hundred and five dollars. And is divided between three funds. The engineering accounts for one point forty one million, or about eleven percent. Streets accounts for eight point thirty seven million, or sixty seven percent. And stormwater accounts for two point sixty seven million, or twenty two percent. The Public Works Department will have thirty one full-time positions, which is in line with the thirty one full-time positions approved in the fiscal year twenty twenty four, twenty five budget. Distributed among different divisions within the now infra- restructured Public Services Department. Apologize for that. You may ask at this point, why are there no new positions requested in this year's budget? So the answer is simply that we took a strategic approach this year. A part of this year's budget process, we undertook a thoughtful restructuring of the entire Public Services Department. Instead of immediately adding new positions, we focused on realigning and reclassifying existing roles. To better match the actual operational needs and service demands of our community. Our goal was to maximize efficiency and productivity by putting the right people in the right roles and eliminating redundancy. We also created clear reporting lines and redefined division responsibilities to reduce overlaps and bottom max. Over the next fiscal year, we'll be closely monitoring performance metrics, service delivery times, and community satisfaction to see how well these changes are working. If we find that additional staffing is justified, to maintain or improve service levels, we'll bring forward well-supported requests in the next year's budget cycle. We believe this approach is fiscal responsible, aligns with our commitment to good stewardship of taxpayers' dollars, and gives us the flexibility. To adapt as our community's needs evolve. As you can see from the, as we can all see from the pie chart, the Public Works Department proposed operating budget of twelve point eighty nine million. And is divided in the following manner. Personnel accounts for two point eighty six million, or twenty two percent. Operations, seven point oh five million, or fifty five percent. Capital is two point fifty four million, or twenty percent, and contingency is about four hundred and forty thousand, or three percent. It is important to note that three positions are currently funded from the Community Development Department, which is the City Engineer. The Transportation Coordinator and the Administrative Assistant. The funding of these three positions will be adjusted before the first budget hearing and adoption in September. The most notable accomplishments during the fiscal year twenty twenty four, twenty five. Are the asbestos cement water main replacement phase two. Six point four miles of road paving, three miles of road microcape seal. Six point eighty seven miles of sidewalks, eleven new speed humps installed. One thousand seven hundred and sixty one streets maintenance, work orders completed, nine hundred and forty eight stormwater structures inspections. And about four point eighty seven miles of stormwater gravity main added to inventory. As we look at the design engineering. And actually the design engineering, the streets and stormwater budget. The design engineering budget has been increased by thirty one point three percent from the current fiscal year. This increase is due to additional miscellaneous engineering services, several additional engineering software applications. Such as ICPR, Civil three D Autodesk, and Bluebeam. And the purchase of new Ford F one fifty to replace an aging vehicle, as well as GPS units to collect data points. This division also hired two additional senior engineers in the current fiscal year. And we also hired a transportation coordinator. So one of the senior engineers and the transportation coordinator actually started yesterday. The streets budget has been increased by ten point five percent from the current fiscal year. This cre- this increase is due to the addition of more right-of-way maintenance, rising cost of street materials, additional funding for street paving program. A purchase of new Ford F five fifty bucket truck and a purchase of Ford F one fifty to replace an aging vehicle. On the next slide, we will see some of the programs that the streets division is running. And one of the major. Projects is actually the Piedmont Lakes Project, the phases two, three, and four. Includes the three removals, they have been all completed. The phase one. Is the most northern over Lake Jackson, as you can see, the phase two is the one between Lake Jackson and Lake McDate. Just for clarity, if you can't really see from the, from the photo, from the aerial. The phase three is just to the south of phase two and phase four is actually to the east of Blue Lake. So phase two included sidewalk repairs, they have been all completed. The total sidewalks of eight hundred and eighty linear feet and total curbs of two hundred and eighty eight linear feet. Phase three and four will begin in fiscal year twenty six. Regarding the three replacements, uh, first wave is completed and second or final opportunity beginning on July first of this year. Which has already started. The stormwater budget has been increased by twenty four point four percent from the current fiscal year. This cre- this increase is due to the citywide underdrain rehab program and weather stations to be installed to better monitor weather events. We have about six stormwater ponds cleaned, which are major ponds, Big Road Pond C, the Harmon Road. Small and big pond E, Robinson Avenue Pond, and High Avasti Road Pond, which is over at Sam's Club at Walmart. And also the stormwater divi- division completed hundred and seventy three work orders. That's regarding the operating budget. Uh, the total operating budget of the engineering and construction management division for fiscal year twenty five, twenty six. As I already said, is only one point forty one million dollars. However, these two divisions. Manage utilities, transportation, and stormwater capital improvement programs of approximately sixty million dollars. Fifty six point seventy mil- seventy six million are from the CAP funding and the additional amount is including some grants. These capital improvement programs are funded from three distinct funds, which is the four oh one fund, the four oh three fund, and the one oh two fund. The four oh one fund. Is funded from the utility rates to provide for replacement of existing water, wastewater, and reclaimed water infrastructure. The four oh three fund is funded from the utility impact fees to provide for water, wastewater, and reclaimed water infrastructure capacity needs. And the one oh two fund is funded from the transportation impact fees to provide for transportation infrastructure capacity needs and traffic safety. Uh, we can start with highlighting some of the most important projects in the four oh one fund. The total budget request for fiscal year twenty five, twenty six for the four oh one fund is nine million eight hundred and eighty one dollars, a thousand and five hundred dollars. The first project on the list is the asbestos and galvanized water main replacement, which we're requesting one million dollars for. Uh, this is also related to the federal grant that a few years ago, the city applied for. It was part of the one point four trillion dollars of the previous administration that was given for infrastructure of different kind, including. Lot of networks, utilities, transportation, and other programs that serve the nation. So we applied for two point five million dollars with a match of two point five million dollars by the city. And that grant has been awarded, but since then they have changed the rules. And now they, they provided, basically the award is for two point five million dollars without any match. And to my understanding, Blanche, we're still waiting on the, on the allocation of the two point five million.
Yes, we are.
Yes. So basically the phase one that was completed, we've already paid from the city funds. And this year we're going into phase two. And ninety percent of that is, uh, already completed for the design, and we expect to start construction as early as possible. This includes what we have remaining, it's about ten point five miles of asbestos cement pipe and about two point six miles of galvanized pipe. Left in our water distribution system.
And that's, that's phase two?
Uh, this is gonna be remaining for phase two, and, uh, the grant included, uh, was over five year period, so it will include five phases.
I'm sorry, uh, can you repeat that?
Yes, the grant was divided into. Uh, the entire grant, the one point four trillion, uh, budget provided by the federal government was divided in a five-year cycle. So there will be, each year there will be dedicating five hundred thousand dollars towards this particular project.
So each year they'll be dedicating five hundred thousand dollars toward. Replacement of?
Correct, correct, towards the program.
We'll double check that, but, cause right now, um, what I got factored is the million dollars to offset the million dollar cost. Um, not aware of an allocation of five hundred thousand per year, but I know it's a two point five million dollar grant, but I'll follow up on that.
That, I just, from my recollection, that was in the original.
I think that was probably.
In the original application, yes, yeah, yeah, but it changed, so.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, so we're not spending two point five million this year, only five hundred thousand? We're only spending a million in FY twenty six.
Yes.
One million in FY twenty six. One million? Yes, ma'am. Okay.
Correct.
In FY twenty six? Yes. And that's the five hundred thousand for twenty five and five hundred thousand for twenty? Out of the total of two point five million, we're looking to get to, uh, uh, spend a million in FY twenty six. And that's for phase two? His, yeah, because the previous years, we covered it out of the budget. Okay, we, we paid for phase one, the, the city taxpayers paid for phase one. Yes. So now this grant. Yes. Fund will pay for phase two. And any additional that we do in the future. And that was, I know you gave a certain amount, ten point, what was?
Ten, ten point five miles of asbestos cement pipe and two point six miles of galvanized pipe. That's all we have.
Where were they located at again?
Uh, most of the cement pipes, asbestos pipes are in the. Southern section of town, like around, uh, Sun, Suncrest, I think subdivision there. We have replaced some in the, in the past there over the years. This is the section that we have, um, taken from the Orange County over twenty years ago. And some of that was already replaced, but still the majority of it is, it's in the old section of town. It's the same thing with the galvanized. The galvanized pipes are mostly just north of four forty one. Um, between four forty one, City Hall, and Kitland Nelson Park, and a little bit further to the north.
Now, do we contract that out, or was that done here?
Yes, the construction is contracted.
Part of the expense then we is, we paid with, out of the million? Yes, yes, for this particular project and for what he plans to do, it should be covered by that million dollars. So the cost of replacing this, one million dollars for the contractor and the work and the materials?
Yes, that will be for construction, correct.
All of that will be under this million dollars?
Yes.
Including the pipes themselves and all that?
Yes, yeah, but again, that's not gonna be the entire amount. We, when we originally applied for the, for the grant. We anticipated the total cost to be five million dollars. This was three, four years ago. So now we know that the prices have changed, there's significant increase in cost, especially construction. We don't really have the right, the new estimate of what it's gonna cost today to replace all of this. But we gotta proceed with the program and we gotta start eliminating some of this infrastructure.
And your plan is to, to replace ten point five miles, two point six galvanized pipes?
Correct, that's what we have left in our system.
Oh, that's what we have left in our system?
Yes.
So with the, if we, if we don't cover all of this, then. Who's gonna pay for it to get completed? Does that come out of the general fund then? No, ma'am. As mentioned earlier, prior to receiving the grant, we covered it out of this fund. Okay, so prior to receiving the grant, it was covered out of the four oh one, it should be in four oh one.
It should be in the four oh one, yes.
Four oh one fund. So that was one of the expenses related to the four oh one fund. We wanted to continue that program, I think in the prior year budget, it might have been at five hundred thousand. If I can recall off the top of my head.
But, but we don't, we don't have enough, there's not enough funding to do the whole.
To do the whole time, correct.
So we did as much as we could.
Ba- basically, all replacement of existing utility infrastructure should come from the four oh one fund.
And we have a new grant that's coming for a million fifty seven thousand in addition to the two point five as well. So we do have additional funding that is, will become available.
And that was presented at the last city council meeting, I believe Mayor Nelson pointed it out.
So this is another grant that we applied for? Yeah, it's a portion.
There was some.
You got a state.
Yeah.
Legislative appropriation.
Appropriations money, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, yes.
You can keep going.
Well, can you walk, just tell, for design engineering, what? What account ID is that? What, what fund is that?
Thirty four ten, and it's under four oh one.
Under four oh one?
Yeah, the last one under four oh one is design engineer. Thirty four.
The last one, okay, and then streets is?
Fund one oh one.
One oh one, stormwater is?
Fund one twenty.
One twenty, okay. I'm just trying to keep up, the books are.
I will.
Again, difficult to deal with.
Well, it's not the books, it's you dealing with a reorg and you're, we have to account for these things by the fund, that's GAAP. So, but this is how it's reported.
Which I'm fine with that, it's just, again, I'm trying to compare the presentation to what has been present, given today.
I understand. Well, if you look in the original book, we kind of provided that detail behind it, so it would make.
But I need the years to track.
I know, but it kind of provided the detail behind it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, the next request is a hundred thousand dollars for the miscellaneous water main upgrades. And we also have a five hundred thousand dollars request for wastewater collection system pipeline rehab, rehabilitation program. So just to point out, uh, about ten days ago, we applied for a grant. Which is the supplemental appropriations for the Hurricane Helene and Milton. It's part of the clean water. Uh, state revolving fund. And we applied for a twelve million dollars to replace all the clay. Pipe, all the clay pipe, gravity pipes that we have in the wastewater system. So we're, we're expecting to. To have some positive outcome on that.
Does that cover all clay pipes that we have?
That should cover, I believe, all, uh, that we included all, right? Oh, no, that was the. Okay. That was in the. Okay. I think this was in the, mostly in the central section of town.
Okay.
Which is kind of considered as a disadvantaged area, so I believe that one of the conditions was that. In the application, that.
It has to be a specific area.
Specific area, correct.
Okay, thank you.
The next budget item, we request four point six million dollars for the master lift station number seventeen replacement. This is the one that uh Glenn spoke about earlier, over at the Frank Halton, just north of that. This is one of the major stations that we have. And four point six million will come from the four oh one fund. While the two point five million will come from the four oh three fund because of increasing capacity. So the total cost will be about seven point one million dollars.
And we can't use all of that for, we can't use all of four oh three, we can't charge it all to four oh three?
We can, because there's a lot of existing flow going through it. And this, again, this system is, this lift station is fifty four years old.
Wow.
Yeah.
Okay.
The next line item is eight hundred and sixty five thousand dollars for the Apapka Terrace lateral rehabilitation.
What is that?
This is basically replacing all the lateral sewer connections. That run into the road from the houses, from the homes to the road. This is the Apapka Terrace area over by Sam Piper, um. Uh what are the other roads?
Nine nine G O.
Yes, yeah, there's total of hundred and nineteen three services. The system is about forty three years old. And all these lines will be lined, basically. It's gonna be more cost effective to to do it that way instead of ripping out the road and replacing the whole system there. So, we believe that's a reasonable price for that service and it will help that community. Uh the next budget item is two hundred and thirty thousand dollars request for a generator and bypass pump replacement program. Uh this is something that Glenn also mentioned earlier. We also did a. Application for about one million dollars through the clean water SRF fund. Uh for the same lift station generator and bypass pumps. So, we're hoping to get some support there. And the last item into the four oh one fund is the two hundred thousand dollars for the SCADA RTU upgrades.
What is and and what is that?
This is basically the SCADA system. We need to update our SCADA system from current radio system to cellular, because radio is becoming obsolete. And the estimated cost is between ten to fifteen thousand dollars per cabinet. So we have total of about hundred and twenty remaining that we need to convert. And our anticipation is to do maybe fifteen a year, which will in a way create like an eight year program to replace all. We dedicate two hundred thousand dollars every year.
For. There's lots to take in here, the. Lift stations themselves, this one you said is fifty four years old, number seventeen?
Correct.
What's our kind of average age, do we have a database of ages and what components need to be replaced, are replaced, a maintenance plan? Do we have that?
Yes, we, over the years, we collected a lot of data. One of our consultants, Reese Engineering, it was previously the name, now it's C H A. They did in a separate phases, so we know that we have eleven master station, master lift stations. And we have generators at Tannen and the bypass system. So we're trying to put this in line, and of course, a lot of the infrastructure is actually new with all these new developments. But we try to address specifically this one and probably next year, we're gonna bring seventy seven, which is down on Bradshaw and Ford. Those are the critical uh master lift stations that take a lot of flow coming from the north and bringing it. Over to the south to the wastewater treatment plant.
Are we budgeting for, you said we need one, at least one additional generator for whichever one doesn't have one?
Uh on the generators, I think, yes, yeah, there will be one generator or bypass per year. Right now, we have portable generators, they can be deployed if necessary for those that do not have. Gabby has a lot of more information.
Hi, I'm Gabby, I'm the utility program supervisor, sorry, I have a head cold. Um this is our holy bible from C H A, it is the rehab and replacement program for all of our lift stations. Um it essentially gives us a list of all of the critical lift stations that need to have bypass pumps put in. Along with a list of which order we need to start rehabbing our lift stations. Uh so for instance, right now, we are in the process of rehabbing lift station thirty, along with putting in a bypass pump for lift station thirty this year. This is also supposed to be for next year also, so we'll pick one out of the the top five and do one again next year. So this is essentially like our bible.
So you have like. Stations do we have, I'm sorry?
We have a hundred and seventy three, but we'll have four that'll be coming online probably within the next year. So it'll be like a hundred and seventy eight here soon.
So we we currently have a hundred and seventy three lift stations.
That we currently actually own, that will maintain.
And we're adding?
There'll be four that once they actually we take ownership of, we'll actually start maintaining them, right now they're still in the developer's name.
And so that document there, you could tell me fifteen years from now. It's gonna be probably this group of lift stations that are gonna need attention.
That's the idea, yeah.
Okay, that's that's great to have, that's very valuable, cause then we can budget correctly and get ahead of this and make sure that.
And take into account of inflation and everything like that, they did try to give us estimates, but you can't ever guess inflation and everything, so.
No, but that's very helpful, that I'm I'm glad to hear that, um so thank you for that information. The, I'm I'm jumping around here again because there's a lot of information here. For impact fee, so four oh three fund, do we have a total, Miss Sherman, this is for you, I think. Do we have a total amount that we've provided it, provided to developers? In impact fee credits over the last year, out of that fund?
No, I do not have that total amount.
Okay.
I would have to, you know, go back.
It's somewhere, yeah, but.
I'd have to dig and see, and actually I have to locate all of the um DA agreements as well. Cause we have some things that are, you know, that we haven't provided, cause they haven't completed the work, but we do have the obligation.
So yes, liability, it's, I I understand that, so, but we could see in the past year, the checks we've written out of that account.
Yeah, I can, that part I can find out.
For reimbursements, yeah, I it just, just to help understand, because those are for obviously them to do certain improvements that we've agreed to. Uh this one goes back, I think, a little bit to backflow preventers, I don't know if you can help me with this one to get updates, what? Sorry. Just trying to understand where we're at with that, um how many do we have outstanding? Do we have a database of what what's outstanding and things of that nature?
So the thing with the backflow is, we don't own the backflows in the city of Apapka. So that's one thing I want everybody to kind of understand is we don't own them, we're not like Orange County, I think Orange County owns them and they charge like a three dollar fee. Uh we do have a program that is gonna start in July, where we're gonna use BMP. Um it's called best management practice or best management program, excuse me. Uh but we're gonna actually gonna have a database now where I can actually answer your question and tell you how many uh backflows that we will have within the city. Uh but we are maintaining the program, we are turning in the testing data to F D E P, so as of right now, we are in compliance.
Okay, and and that was giving me my question, are we at least, are we adhering to whatever requirements?
Yeah, we're sending letters, notifying customers, answering questions, starting conversations with people who have never heard of them.
Okay, and so you will eventually, like this month, have a database of this?
We're gonna have a kickoff meeting July twenty fourth.
Okay, excellent, love that, okay, very cool. And then, so Miss Sherman, another question for you on on this, there. Somewhere in one of these books, and we discussed this yesterday as well, there's a testing. Allocation request, basically for twenty five hundred dollars to test water consumption. Um similar to what we had under your utility fund yesterday as well. Or under your.
That was, that was meter or something.
Correct, so we have the same thing as in this budget as well.
I don't think that if she's coming up to speak in regards to that.
Madri Watson, the environmental program supervisor, can you repeat your question again?
So there's, and I'm trying to find it in which book that I earmarked it. Uh i- it's under operating supplies, four oh one, thirty one sixty one, fifty two hundred. Uh meter testing fees used to test water meters as requested by.
That is mine, that is mine, I thought you were referring to another.
But it's also, it's in four oh one as well.
So which which account in four oh one, so we can?
Fifty two hundred?
Under four, which cost center?
Thirty one sixty one.
Thirty, okay, that is four oh one fund. A utility building, remember I said? It reports to finance, but it's a part of utility operations, because of what it is, building, it reports to finance.
So why is it an expense under yours and an expense?
That's, that is mine, when I presented yesterday, I presented thirty one sixty one. But that's not the general fund, that was fund four oh one.
Right.
Okay? It's the same thing, it's the, it's one item, it's the same same thing.
Your department's managing that though?
Yes, cause it's utility billing, the my, the utility billing staff, yes, it's billing.
It's not listed under yours?
Yes, it is, here we go.
It is, so that that's what I'm asking, I get, but it's listed. Can you point me to the page, just so I can see it?
When I did my presentation?
Yes, ma'am. So Commissioner, the organizational oversight for utility billing lies in the finance department. But that fund is the four oh one fund for utility billing. So if you look at the, if you look at her presentation yesterday, that account number is the same. Page sixty five, correct, of of yes, or of the previous book.
Yesterday, yes, I did eleven twenty and thirty one sixty one.
I see, okay, thank you, that clears it up, thank you, yes.
So that's why, but technically it's a part of the four oh one fund and I gave you a book by fund.
Yes, I understand.
Got it?
Thank you. Okay, so. Can we take a deep dive into Golden Gem now? Is this the appropriate time to do it?
Yes, that's coming next.
Golden Gem.
Yeah, yeah, we're going to the four oh one next.
Yeah, that's next.
The four oh three, I'm sorry, yeah, four oh one, we just completed, and that will include the golden gem.
Yeah, but before you go there, in reference to the the backflow preventers. Are we still providing the service to customers that want to allow the city? To come and change out their backflow preventers, have them tested, are we still doing that?
Absolutely, the only thing we don't do is we don't test, we test our municipality, but we do not test residential, we will only convert them. We're actually using a contractor to help with the backlog of those.
So so.
So say a customer calls and they say, hey, I don't wanna actually get it tested, can we just go ahead and convert because it's good for five years, we'll come out there and convert them.
And what's the cost for that?
It is three hundred dollars and it's split at a hundred dollars for three months.
And it's in their water bill, right?
It's a summer one charge.
If it's going up a hundred dollars, then it'll be divided by four bills?
Uh three months, so it's a hundred dollars for three months, or if they need to do like fifty dollars, we can do fifty dollars, it's it's really up to them.
And so all they do is call the water department and request that be done?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah, if they get the letter and they're like, yeah, we don't wanna bother with it, we'll we'll come out there and do it, it's fine.
Okay.
How many do we have left to replace?
Um off the top of my head, I couldn't give you a direct answer, I know everything from twenty twenty one is now coming up to now have maintenance done. Which is why we did see the increase in the budget as you saw, um cause those have to be maintenance every five years versus tested every two years. Uh but off the top of my head, once we get this program up and running, I should be able to get better numbers in the future. But because we're running off of Excel sheets, I can't tell you off the top of my head.
No problem. When is that program coming online?
We have a kickoff meeting on the twenty fourth of July, so we'll start running, they'll let us know what they need from us, so that we can start working in. Our fog program actually uses them, that's where we met the the company, the owner of the company. We saw their cross connection program, loved it, it's very user friendly.
Okay, thank you for being here tonight, very valuable the the information you have.
No problem.
Truly appreciate it.
We're moving to the four oh three fund. Which is the. Capital improvements funded from the utility impact fees. Uh the first project on the line we have is the Grosvenbacher Water Treatment Plant, we asked for one point five million. Dollars for the design of the ozone treatment for the plant. And we also asked for one million dollars for the replacement of the high service pumps. So.
So that one point five is exclusively for design?
That's gonna be for design, correct.
How much are the, how much is that gonna be then, if that's just the design?
It's, so the design along will take about nine to twelve months.
Okay.
And then we will have to go into construction, and that will be around twenty million dollars. So.
And that's the one, uh like on Martin Street that you see on right here, on Rockford Road?
Correct, right now, what you see there is the construction of the final well, which is deepening it to going to the lower floor in Actor. Replacing the upper floor then, and there's a one point five million gallon ground storage tank. So those two projects go concurrently, they should be completed by the end of the year.
So. So we're doing design and there's gonna be a twenty million dollar expense?
There's gonna be twenty million dollars expense, probably a year, more than a year from now.
How old is the plant, how old is the plant?
The the ground stor, the plant is very old, it started like, I think nineteen sixty nine.
So this is since nineteen sixty nine?
So so the smaller ground storage tank is nineteen sixty nine.
Okay.
And the larger ground storage tank is nineteen eighty six, that's the one we're replacing now, because it was in a. Way worse, but uh. Sit, yeah, than the than the one from nineteen sixty nine.
Okay, so this is something that's extremely old, okay, we're trying to, okay.
Yes.
So so that twenty million, though, where are we getting that, are we taking that out of the?
So what we did is we also applied for the drinking water SRF about ten days ago. For the Grosvenbacher plant expansion, and we put twenty million dollars request. We're hoping to, that's gonna be a major item, and we're hoping to get something on.
So otherwise, that just comes out of impact fees, or out of out of the four oh one, excuse me, four or three?
That will come probably from the four oh one, because it's gonna be complete reconstruction. There there will be some, there will be some capacity increase there.
But not, it's, I, we can't use all of that, I guess I can't, we can't use all of that twenty million and take it out of four oh three. Uh because it's not all exclusively.
Yes.
Uh to 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 expand, so, well, four oh one doesn't have twenty million, or even close to that, so. Is this, I mean, and we've, I guess we had this discussion last year, so we'll start that again. We can't bond this because we don't have the revenue to.
What we, with the rate study, you're gonna get an update, and in that rate study over the five year period, which starts in twenty five. Cause remember, we kind of started it there, it goes to twenty twenty nine, that includes various rate increases over the years. But it also includes, you know, securing debt for some of those key projects. So. That's what, and that's what we're trying to do, get his, you know, the secure, trying to go after some grants, you know, as as Valat just mentioned, but. It will require a securing debt in the lateral years.
And that debt will be based on four oh one?
It's four oh one and four oh three.
It could go out, you.
Depending on the projects, the project list that I have includes projects from four oh one and projects from four oh three.
Correct. Okay, so i- in the years to come, we'll be, we'll be getting substantial bonds, then?
That's the plan, as long as we can continue to build these, you know, build up reserves and everything, that's.
So, and 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 well, and you had made the point of uh getting our financial advisor to kind of give us an update on. You said if it was over five million dollars per calendar year, it doesn't become tax exempt?
It, I think it's because of the Emerson Park situation, because we're on their behalf, so let me get more information, that's what was shared with me.
Okay.
One of the main questions that was asked before we closed out that loan is, do you, at that time, we were not. Do you plan to issue any more debt in this calendar year? And at that time, we hadn't even started the budget meetings, and I kept contemplating, I said, not that I'm aware of. So, basically how it was reported, you know. That we would not be issuing any more debt, so that's why I'm saying I need to push it out to the next cal- calendar year. But I I will get you that information.
Okay. So we're looking like we're getting, but it's gonna be a a lot of debt next year?
It wants, you, when you get that update, in the lateral years, yes, we planned, if we wanna could do some of these major capital projects, we, yes, we're gonna have to go after some debt.
How, I guess, do do we have like a comprehensive, like a a one pager of, for this fund, we're gonna be going this much? This fund, we're gonna be requesting this much, in what year, like in the next five years, do we have like a capex plan of? The debt that we're gonna require for our projects?
We do have the five year capex plan, remember that, that's what we use, they revised that plan.
But I guess I need the 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 bond side of that, how much are we gonna?
Financing side of that, that, when he comes in, he will share that with you, as to what year. That, when he comes in, he will share that with you as to what year that he factored the debt and the payback of that debt. I just don't have that in my head, but he has that in detail.
Cause that's gonna be, I mean, it just increases debt service obviously for each fund in each department as we, as we go. So I just. There, there's a lot of planning that goes into that down the road.
It's like a five year plan to support, you know, the ongoing operations and the capital improvements that we wanna do.
Okay. Yeah, that, that's, I guess we just need to get ahead of that, that.
And we're, that's where, again, I'm, I was trying to ask earlier, I've talked to Raff Tillis and they are available on the twenty second. If we wanna do a workshop. I've mentioned to you yesterday that I wanted to do a workshop to bring you back. All of the results of the various studies that they were working on. And that includes the water and wastewater study, um, sanitation. As well as the impact fees. They did kind of help us a little bit with stormwater this year.
What, what time is that?
Um, you tell me. I was thinking about what, five, five, five fifteen, five o'clock, five, five?
No, 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 no. Can we do it the week before? I'm not available on the twenty second. Remember, we had that discussion already.
I, I, let me, let me see what their availability is. What day works for you? Cause we have the council meeting on that Wednesday night.
The sixteenth.
And this is gonna take, I, I know we're gonna do at least three hours.
Well, we don't have to do it on Wednesday.
No, we don't. That's what, that was a Tuesday. Tuesday's the twenty second.
I'm, I'm not available that whole week.
That, that's twenty one through the twenty four. Fifth, sixth, seventh?
Whatever the following Monday is.
Twenty eight.
Let me, let me see what, um, the Thursday looks like for them.
Yes.
No, the, the seventeenth, mayor.
The seventeenth?
Yes.
Hi, your smile. I'm looking at my calendar here, um.
And I know we have to get it advertised, Susan. How many days? A week? Yeah.
So we won't know, and when they come in to update us on. The proposal for increased fees. From what I'm hearing, the discussions we've been having is that they're gonna be requesting or a, uh, recommending a much higher amount than what this budget is allowing.
No, no, I'm getting those amounts. That FY twenty six amount is, is what is in their, um, results.
Okay. But what about the, the transfer to general fund? Are, is that the same group that made recommendations of how much should be transferred?
Again, like.
But you were saying that that was less than what they recommended?
Yes, that's on the expense side. The expenses that they're using is truly an estimate. I deal with the revenue side for them and deal with the expenses that are being, that are coming through this budget.
Okay, so he's, you're looking at the seventeenth to?
I'm thinking of the seventeenth. I don't know how that works for, and I got to find out how it works for them as well. I know. I don't, Sean, that's, he, he's the one. He's the one that has some time that he can't be available. So let me find out.
Would, would it be beneficial for y'all could just send me your availability, some good dates for the next couple of weeks? I'd, I'd just send me what, I'll move around what I need to move around.
Okay, because we gotta, gotta, I don't have too many days to wait. That's why I'm trying to expedite this and get with them. Understand, so.
It has to be in July?
I mean, we trying to get it done before we finalize the, um, going into, set the rates come, um, August first.
So going back to four oh three, um, Vlad, now this, this well at Grostenbacher is the last well now that we've.
That one and the Plymouth Regional.
Right.
So they're bored under construction. They're gonna be done by the end of the year. So that will include all the wells being in the lower upper.
So just, just so everybody knows that the, so this is a, you know, Saint John's Water Management, it's. The, the wells we have now are, are, have had in the middle aquifer, middle aquifer. Has the most impact on our springs. So Saint John says, we want you to move all your wells to the lower aquifer. Okay, so. There's a cost associated with going to lower aquifer for, obviously you gotta drill a well that's now twice as deep or more. And the second thing is you have to, now the water quality, you would think water quality deeper would be better, but it's worse. So not only do we have to drill a deeper well to replace the ones that were perfectly fine. But we now have to add an ozone treatment. To get the water to the quality that, that people wanna drink. So. You know, we've been changing these wells out to, you know, to get to the point where we've met, you know, Saint John's and, and the, the good thing is that we're. By shuffling where we're putting the wells, they're, they're gonna give us some credits toward. The, the wells farther away from the springs are more advantageous for Saint John's and for our springs. So we, we've got a pretty good fit as to where. The growth is and also where the wells will go that will have the least impact on. The springs. That affair, okay.
So, so they make these requests, but no funding?
Oh, no, that's, no.
Yeah, so.
Well, and I, and I'll tell you that, that, uh. I'm glad you brought that up because I, I, Jeff Kotkamp, who's a pretty good friend, who's former lieutenant governor now, he's running, um. Um, uh, Tax Watch. And so they look at things like that. And I said, I said, Jeff, can you take a look at the unfunded mandates that? You know, federal government puts on us and state government puts on us and quantify that, because I think we're, we're, you know. It, it's, it's easy, I mean, it's, 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 it's good for the environment, so I'm, we're not, but. With no, no funding, yeah, it's, so it's coming from us. So these, you know, and it, it goes across all departments, you know, the unfunded liabilities. Obviously, most of them are public services. Um, but even, even fire, even police all have, you know, they put mandates on us, you know, our, our SO, our SORs. SROs at the schools, another unfunded liability, although we're only paying, we're paying. Uh, let's say forty percent of that. So. All these unfunded liabilities and, and, and operating costs. You know, we should, at least they, they ought to be, at least they recognize that they're giving it to us and they're not. So this is, this is a big number that, you know, the state has, has, or, well, state and, and, and our. Water management districts have, have forced on, on municipality. So it's, it's, um, it's a challenge, um.
But is there a timeframe?
Yes.
Putting the responsibility on us, but at the same time, we have to meet that timeframe.
Yes, so. We're the last two wells. We'll be done by the end of the year. And compliance with Saint John's permit, with the consumption use permit, triggers compliance now with the D P permit on the operating.
And so we, so we keep talking about rate increase. So how? How much does impact fees contribute to this?
Uh, again, that, impact fee is a part of it. They do utilize the impact fee, you know, as a part of reducing what that rate increase should be. So that is factored into the analysis, the impact fees. Now, we just, I think when I first came here, you just completed a study and where you raised impact fees. I think it was around December, the twenty twenty two. So they were raised at that particular time. Yes, as I understand it. So they do factor that in there, that growth and all of those impact fees are factored into the model.
So how long do I have to wait before we can increase them again? Because if price material is increasing. And we're leaving the impact rated the same, then they, they're not keeping up with one another. So how long?
That's something we can discuss when they come and bring, we, I don't think we have to wait, as, as I understand it. But that's something we can discuss when they come up with the update as well.
And there's even. There's even state regulation on how much you can, I mean, it's. The regulation on impact fee increases, I mean.
Some new state regulations that have come out too, that we'll be discussing as well.
Alright, I think we need to take a look, look at impact fee rates.
Yeah, I agree. But we all know it's the. The price increases in the last two, three years are just unprecedented.
Yes.
Yeah. So, so every single municipality around the state is affected by it.
Yes, we're all having to deal with it. It's just get ahead of it when we can and how we can. Uh, I know this isn't on the specific list and I don't know where it would be, but the onsite septic systems in Wakava Glen, how's that process going?
I had that question after.
And, and again, I don't know where that is supposed to kind of be peppered in. So I read what's in there. How's that going? How many more do we have to install? And then there's a sixty four thousand dollar, um, expense basically for operations and maintenance of the systems. Do we pass that on to the consumer that's using that?
So for your first question, sorry, there was a lot of questions in there. Um, we have sixty four units installed. The, I think the grant was for ninety units. So we have a couple more to finish that out, um. Your second question was for the maintenance. You said the sixty four thousand in the budget?
Correct, as an expense. Do we, are we passing that expense on to those that are using it?
So the users have to pay in their utility bill. They have to pay, I believe it's around like forty four dollars, forty five dollars. Um, per month. And then we pay onsite thirty five dollars per unit. So it initially, I think that amount was created because if we have all ninety units in there. Monthly, we have to pay whatever, if you do thirty five times the ninety units, monthly times twelve months. That would probably be that sixty four thousand in that budget line item.
Okay.
That increase, when Dio was here, remember when we first brought on that second phase of the program, they talked about it and we looked at the rate and it kind of increased?
Yes, I do remember that. So I just wanted to make sure that was still what's occurring here that it's being passed on. And, and to confirm again, those are all under our, the City of Apopka's permit, like.
Correct. Correct.
As like a, each individual wastewater treatment plants.
Under our FDP permit, correct.
Okay.
Not Saint John's.
Thank you. Okay.
So with onsite, that was a grant, if I'm not mistaken?
Yes, so there was money from FDP and Saint John's that, um. Came into place with that, when that came into place in two thousand eighteen. Yes, ma'am.
Deadline?
So our deadline right now is for March thirtieth, twenty twenty six.
And we have?
Sixty one units installed, so as of today, sixty, huh?
I thought you said, said sixty four.
Oh, no. So sixty one units, um, installed as of date.
Sixty one units?
Yes.
And it's ninety that we have the grant for. So now, March twenty twenty six comes up. And let's just say. We still have sixty one units. What happens?
Um, uh, Saint John's will take back their money. They're not gonna do the, continue the extension. They've already extended it.
They did.
Five times.
They've extended it five times already?
Sorry, I'm. Uh, yes. So, um, we just got it extended this past March. That was the fifth extension and. Um, when I went to Saint John's to their council meeting, that was their last extension that they will be giving to the City of Apopka. There was a point when.
Right on top of the, that, that particular.
Neighborhood.
Residential unit sits literally right on top of the Wakava.
That is correct. It's the neighboring community to the Wakava Springs.
So. What happens after this? I mean, they'll take back their money, but we still have. And I think that particular community is, is over two hundred, uh, residents?
I, I wanna say roughly around a hundred, a hundred and sixty, I don't, yeah. One sixty. So what happens when, even if, let's say, we installed all the units and then the grant funding is gone? It's now up to that resident to ensure if they have. Any issues with their current septic system to where they have to get a new system or something like that. Um, FDP, I don't remember the actual, uh. Well, how do you say, like, regulation? But this past March, FDP launched that. They would have to either upgrade to a system that is like onsite. It would be on their own cost. And if the grant money ran out, or they would have to upgrade to an advanced treatment unit, which would still be on their cost. But it's a little bit different than what onsite is. They would have to go through FDOH to get a permit and stuff like that.
So who manages that? Does the city oversee that?
Correct, yes, I'm the overseer.
Oh, so you, you oversee. So you'll be actually the residents that are not on onsite and have their own septic.
Well, so.
Be monitoring that?
I oversee the ones that are on onsite.
No, that, that's what I'm saying.
Yes.
Absent of the ones that aren't, that are onsite, you're not gonna be managing that.
No.
Onsite themselves manage that.
Do they manage the ones that are on the, yes. So we have a.
The residents that didn't?
That are still on septic. They technically, that's FDOH, that would, the Florida Department of Health would. That's, they deal with people who are still currently on septic. That's not the city's responsibility. And then the ones that do have the onsite units, we have an agreement with onsite that they basically are in charge. Um, to manage their systems as of right now. And that's where we pay that monthly fee to them. They have a main, if anything. Goes out, like, for example, when we had the hurricane, the power goes out. Your systems technically act like a regular septic tank, but when it comes back on, if your system's not. If the, cause there are basically many wastewater treatment systems. If it's not moving like they have to, they have like a SCADA system, an online system. To where you can see in live all those units that are installed and you can see if the flows. Sorry, if you can see if the flows of the, uh, wastewater treatment system are flowing correctly. If they're not, if they get an alert or something like that, onsite's maintenance, um, team will go out there and. Do what they need to do to make sure that the system is working properly. Yes.
So, so, so what is the incentive to get other residents to protect these other thirty or twenty nine units we have left?
You mean like how much do we pay per? Property? Yes, so they get, um.
But I'm not, I'm, I'm sure I don't understand why they're not jumping at this, if this.
Yeah, you're not having consumer buy in on this or what's, why?
So the, the issue probably is because if their system is functionally right. And they have no issues with their system, people who aren't septic, they don't have to pay a monthly fee. So, um, you have some people who don't wanna buy into that monthly payment because when you have a septic system, you may only have to get it. Um, sucked out every five to ten years depending on the system. So, uh, for a resident on their side. If their system is acting correctly, why would they buy into something where they don't have to pay a monthly fee for?
Because if three years down the road, their septic tank goes bad, now it's not a forty, four dollar monthly fee.
Yes.
What?
It would be almost twenty. Well. Technically, right now, the grant is for sixteen thousand five hundred and sixteen dollars for the installation. They still have to pay for their drainage field. As of right now, which is between four thousand and five thousand dollars. And that's another one. So right now, as, uh, you're saying. Technically, if they have, if they need a new drainage field, they will have to pay that four thousand to five thousand dollars on top of the monthly fee. So. I think it's, it's, it's just something the residents have to figure out is, for them, is it worth? Changing right now. But in the long run, you are correct. Once the grant money runs out, then it'll be twenty thousand dollars.
Right. So we, we're saying if the drain field is not working, they gotta pay two thousand, three thousand dollars for your drain field.
It depends on.
It's not working.
Well.
Now.
It gets to be working. It depends on the age of the drainage field. So some of these houses were built in the nineties. So they've never changed their drainage field. But when onsite comes in. And looks at the condition of it, they don't wanna hook up their unit to an old drainage field because then it's, it's gonna fail eventually. So the, in the agreement that we have or like our resolution, these units are supposed to last at least thirty years. For these residents. If they hook up a freshly new unit to an old drainage field. It's probably not gonna last those thirty years, the life that it says in the resolution.
We don't have, I, there's, are, are we kind of at a standstill then? Like no more residents are reaching out? Cause before I feel like we had like a list of people who were like. Let's do this. Are we kind of at, like, we're done with that? Like, nobody's applying?
No, actually, it's the, act, it's the opposite. So in March, um. A couple onsite people, me and the mayor went into Wakava Glen and we did a event, a barbecue event where we went around. Actually showed the residents like what is the purpose of the system, how does it look? What are the benefits of it? And then from there, we were at maybe thirty units from March and now we're at sixty ones. It does take a while because there are applications and all that stuff. They have to get people in to actually do soil sampling and stuff like that. But the turnaround from March until now has been in- increased that we, uh, you know, fifty cent per crease. Fifty cent per crease, increase that we didn't see within the last two years, so.
And this was this past March that you?
This past March until n- a- as of date, we basically installed about thirty one units.
So do you have a list now of?
We have a list, I don't have it in front of me, I'm sorry about that, but I do have a list of. All the units that are in, that have been installed and then what date they were installed.
More so I meant, do we ha- do you have a kind of new applicants, the people that are waiting to get theirs?
So they have about eighteen applications waiting, um as of right now, and it just does take some time again because. They only have certain companies that can come out and install these big units, there sometimes they're um concrete. So you know, they're heavy, it takes a while, they do do the installations within a day. So I think residents do like that, but you know, again, their yard is dug up. So then there's just a lot of things that take into factor with that, but we do have eighteen applications. As of right now, and then the city receives the task orders, once the city signs off on those and then. They can proceed with doing all the soil t- testing, so basically once. The city, like when I receive a task order, within two weeks, there should be a turnaround to where there is an installation that is happening.
That that we, you you so you feel that we're gonna be reached to ninety before the March deadline?
I know, so what it, it just depends, so another thing is, is you have some people who are again. Who are still on the fence, um, but when they start seeing more people install them and they start asking questions. I do get more calls, I get about at least one call a week, I know it doesn't seem a lot. But when you are going from no calls to no interest to at least one call a week, also onsite takes a lot of calls. So I'm like the overseer, but onsite does the legwork for a lot of it, so there are. Maybe a lot more calls coming in, but when they can't reach onsite, they will contact me and then I reach out to onsite. So we have, I think, six task orders in process, eighteen applications, um and ready. You know, they're working with the residents to get through, and then um. I believe, I don't have the sheet right in front of me, it was made today, I do apologize about that. And I think they have like about ten on standby, ready to be installed. So there's, there's not just eighteen, there's the, there's like a process for them.
Parts in different phases.
Correct, so, and then we are um looking to see if we don't, if we start to see stuff slow down in Wakava Glen. Um, there has been talk about maybe reaching out to another neighborhood near Rock Springs, I think it's Blue Ridge. Um, Bluegrass. Yes, uh, that neighborhood and reaching out to them also and providing the, you know, going out there. Advertising and seeing if maybe they, we can offer them i- it to them as well, because they are near the Rock Springs, whereas Wakava Glen is. Near Wakava Springs.
What about the first half of Rock? That's all septic.
Right, the question is, is it, would it be better to go to septic on that, the, you know, the reason we, well, Wakava Glen's got two things going for it, one is it's. Obviously very close to the springs, the second thing is it's because of the, the terrain, a regular um. Sewer system is would been. Problematic in big lots, whereas with um Rock Springs Ridge, there, I mean, they're half bigger lots, I mean, they're big lots, but that's. It might make more sense to convert those to to sewer, not to onsite. Bigger lots until it wouldn't, yeah, so that's, that's our, yeah, that's our plan.
Recommendation would be if if onsite wants is is, cause they're gaining. The benefit of having onsite. Why aren't they out there trying to convince the residents? Why are we as the city going out there and trying to get the residents to convert? When onsite is actually should be putting that effort in.
Um, I mean, I will say they, what they do is they usually reach out to me, and then I get with the mayor to just approve of it. To make sure if they're going out and sending out, if if, when we did the barbecue, after the barbecue. Right, we did mailers and then we sent out a le- we sent out letters to everyone, we got some return, but. After the letters, which were in, I would say end of March going into April. That's when we seen the big boom happen, so when people actually receive those letters, and then onsite helped out with. Creating the letters, so they are con- onsite ca- calls me probably every two days about how we can reach out to more residents. It's just a joint thing.
Is being put in. Our city personnel, rather than they should be coming into the city. And I understand that they probably be picking up the cost of it, but the effort is being made by us. To have them to convert to them, but they're the ones who are benefiting from this.
I think, cause within the agreement, it basically goes through the city, so they can't just reach out to the residents without. Letting the city know that they are reaching out to the residents, cause we don't want them to be overbearing and the residents feeling like they're being pressured.
Joint collaboration and that there's a trust factor there going through the city.
The, so the grant funds, do they have to be expended by March of twenty six, or can it just be earmarked? Like, we've got approvals, they just haven't been installed yet.
They, well. That I do not have the actual correct answer for that, like, I understand you're saying like, let's say we have this one in process. And then we hit that date, I do not know. As of right now, if Saint John's would allow us to use that funds, that would be something I would have to ask them.
Okay, cause I think that'd be beneficial now as we approach that date, uh less than a year to know, especially with the ones that are available still.
Typically with a grant, if that, by that deadline, you usually have to have them expended. By that deadline, and sometimes they make you even have to have them reimbursed, so I'm hoping this one is expended.
Okay, okay, thank you again for being here too, this is great.
This is it, Saint John's, this is the fifth and last.
Alright, so we're going back to four oh three. The next request is a four point eight million dollars for the Northwest Recreation Complex Reclaim Water Storage Pond Pump Station. Phase two, this is the one where the fountain is, it's the east pond. The construction you see right now is the Northwest Pond, which is providing a pump system. And a pipeline to take water during the drought season, like we discussed a few weeks ago. From that pond, which we have about eighty million gallons of storage directly into the. Uh Northwest Reclaim Water uh Plant. So the phase two, which is divided into phase two A and phase two B, the phase two A is this ph- this phase. Which will provide a pumping station for the east pond. And that east pond has actually a mixed reclaim water and stormwater. So they can be, they cannot be sent directly into the uh reclaim water plant for public access, it can only be utilized. For irrigation of the park facility, so that's the plan for that. Basically, that will take about, during the dry season, they use about one million gallons a day. During the rainy season, about half a million gallons, so it will help tremendously. By not pulling from the ground storage tanks directly being able to irrigate from the, from that pond.
So that, uh all of this is exclusively to just use irrig- to irrigate Northwest Rec.
That's correct. The other one that we're gonna do is a phase two B that will come next year, that will be the west pond. Which is west of the, of the fountain. And that will be connected to the same pipeline system that we're currently constructing. Those two ponds, the west pond and the northwest pond, will go, after being filtered. Will go directly into the ground storage tanks of the Northwest Reclaim Water Point.
How much is phase two B estimated?
Probably be similar to this one.
So ten million dollars for that?
Yeah, there's gonna be less piping because we're putting the piping right now, but there's gonna be some interconnection that we have to run from the south side over to the north.
And that's coming out of the four oh three, okay. So that'll be ten million dollars over the next two years, just for that.
Yeah, approximately, yes.
Then we can use four or three, that's ex- that's expanding capacity, cause I thought we were already using those ponds as part of our calculation. For capacity, I thought, like, I I didn't think that was an increase in capacity.
Well, they're only, right now, they're used as a storage, right, they cannot be really, no water can be pulled out of it. So basically, it's like, it it's like a golden gem situation, we have the pond, now the next phase is to build the, the reclaim water plant. With a pumping system, the generators and all the equipment that is required to be able to pull, I'm sorry, to pull the water out of the pond. And send it directly to the customers. So it's the same application.
So it's basically, I mean, so just be, in my head, it helps, just because the pond was built fifteen, twenty years ago. It's still, it's still technically kind of the same project, as if it's the same project from twenty years. Okay, okay, I understand the logic then.
We can move to the next one, the next budget item is a request for twelve point five million dollars. For the Golden Gem Reclaim Water Plant Expansion, now, this is the same concept like we just described on the Northwest and Jason Valley. The two ponds were built first, and the next phase is to build a pumping system. To be able to take the water out of there and send it over to public access. So these twelve point five million will cover specifically for that purpose. The two million dollars that during Glenn's presentation earlier, we mentioned for the repair of the liner. That applies only to the smaller pond, which is the fifty million gallon storage pond.
That's the liner for the.
That's the liner for the, for the, basically the smaller pond, which is the west pond.
We call it the west pond, is that like what the vernacular you guys use?
Yeah, or small and large pond, yes.
And then twelve point five million is? That that two million was basically, real, it it was put into the the rate model. And we were putting two million in per year to get to probably about ten million, which was for the original pond. Now, if you choose to do the smaller one first, that's fine, but that's, that's what that two million represents. To build up the funds for that ten million, okay?
Correct, the reason why we're doing the smaller one is because it's easier to make once we build a plant, to have the facility fully operational. Cause the fix of the larger pond will require more time and logistics and eventually will be more expensive.
Which, which one, the bigger pond? Completely downed. So we have a consent order with that one currently right now.
I, the consent order is not for the pond. It's, yes.
What is it for?
Yeah, the consent order that we uh had received from D E P, they did put that in there, but. That's since been removed, the consent that we received was for a pond at the the permitted. Plant, the wastewater plant down on Cleveland Street, the problem that we had is, and I think my sense of, was we had to get. Free to a vendor or something that could, uh, I don't remember what what the cost is, we had a problem, we had to get. We had to clean the pond, we had to get the contractor, they had a, it was a much cheaper price, but it was a mechanical, and we had, we had to. Had to get it bid out somehow, it was a little bit of a. But but the thing is, just so to clarify where we're at now, so that was what they hit us for the consent for. Is because we didn't get that pond as part of, when they issued our new permit, we didn't get that pond done, and they gave us one year to get it done. Clean, yes, and evaluate, we have since done that, that is completed. I know that Mister Shepherd had wrote something, and I think D E P was in agreement that, you know, that the consent should have been nothing for Golden Gem. Again, D E P doesn't regulate that, we don't even have a permit with D E P yet. For that to be in operations, you heard what Vlad said, we don't even have a pumping station yet, so. That, that's what the consent was for, and my understanding, I haven't got it. That consent's supposed to be uh lifted, again, I will get with Mister Shepherd and find out where we're at on that, because we have met that obligation. Of what the consent was given for uh at the.
For the wastewater and Cleveland Street, you you've met the obligation.
Yes, ma'am.
Under that updated order though, what, didn't didn't we have to expend some funds towards a a a program or something to?
Penalty that come with it? That's what you was looking at, did, yeah, the, so we have the option, again, I don't know where that, not that, what that number coming out, until Shepherd. Mister Shepherd is finished with that, um, we could pay, elect to pay the the penalty for the fine for not meeting that. Or we could offset it with a a P two project or something that would do, um. I'll be honest with you, sometimes you're better off just go ahead and pay the penalty, because some of those P two projects cost you more than what the penalty will be, I'm just, uh. There there is that option that they offer to us, and I think that's what you probably read in.
Have we made a decision on that yet?
No, sir, cause I don't know that. I don't know until that, the uh is, I know that that's in the works right now.
Is that part of to close out the consent order, that needs to get finalized then? Okay, so that's kind of that last component, until we can, okay.
Alright, and so where where are we at with Golden Gem?
So that's the plan for now, we're currently working with Saint John's. Uh, on a extension for the memorandum of agreement.
How many extensions have we gotten from Saint John's?
Probably four, I would say, this will probably be the fifth one. So we're working closely with them, by the end of this month, we'll have another meeting, we'll, they'll present their case. To their board sometime in August, and I think their board is meeting uh sometime in September.
So what's the deadline with Saint John's, I mean, we, if if we were to say, you know what? Take back Golden Gem, it's costing us more than what it's worth to fix or bring to up to standards. What would it, what would the city have to pay back to Saint John's?
From my recollection, it was four point five million dollars for the purchase of the land. Plus included some interest rate over yearly, over the period of time since two thousand and nine. Which is gonna be, let's say, sixteen years. I don't know what that amount is going to be, I did.
So you're saying twelve point five million just to start, and it's the smaller pond?
Well, it's not only to start, it's basically to build the reclaim water plant.
To build?
To build the reclaim water plant, to have the pumping system, to have the filtration system, that will take water from it, the generator. All the other equipment that is required for that, the roadway access, pretty much everything that will complete. The facility as a hundred percent operational. Which at that point will mean by repairing the smaller pond, withdrawing reclaim water from the smaller pond. Filtrating it, sending it back to public access.
So there's a small pond and a big pond? And so what are we doing with the big pond?
The big pond, we're working with one of our consultants on the evaluation of it, and we should have in a few months. Some report on that and see what is gonna be the best approach to repair that pond.
Didn't we hire a Mister Devo, um, what did he come in, what did he do?
To my understanding, he was only doing the the evaluation of the failure. I don't know if, I I wasn't at the time here, so I don't know if.
Of investing anything in Golden Gem at this point. Um, I think it's costing our taxpayers a lot of money and we're just not.
But it also generates revenue, once it's, once the pond is, the facility is fully operational, it will generate revenue.
It's been down for how long right now?
It's never been up.
It's never been up, okay. When did we purchase it?
Two thousand and nine.
Oh my god.
It was purchased by Saint John's and it was given with a certain conditions through the.
Purchased in two thousand nine.
Yes, two thousand nine, correct.
And we're now in two thousand twenty five, and it's literally defunct.
Well, it's not defunct because it was never completed, only the ponds need to be repaired, the the facility was not fully completed.
That's a clever phrase, can't be defunct if it was never up. That's clever.
Um, because even, even if the pond is operational, right, you can only put water, so much water into it. And at some point, it's gonna be full and you can't pull the water for public access, so the the. Reclaim Water Plant Facility needs to be constructed in order to utilize fully that facility there.
So that, we're we're budgeting two million dollars out of four oh one for an ambiguous.
It was, the original intent behind the funding aspect of that was to repair that liner.
On for west pond or east pond?
The, whatever the big one is.
Yeah, the big one is east.
No, I said the funding, that's, that, when we first started putting that fund.
No, I said the funding. That's, that, when we first started putting that funding in the rate study, that was to. Do it for the big liner, but as I understand it, they wanna work on this smaller one first. Which is fine, cause both of them have to be worked on.
Okay, so.
So, do, do, do you have, okay, so you're saying twelve point five million. Will be, will repair or remediate the smaller one, right? It will fix it? The smaller pond, so it be fun?
Yes, and, and again, this is all related to price increases, right? Few years ago, when we looked first into that, the cost estimate was roughly around four, four point five million. But we know all the prices have tripled in the last two, three years.
So that's, that's why I'm asking, is it worth? For twelve point five million to repair one half of Golden Gem Pond? Is it just easier to give it back to Saint John's and pay? And then it be not our responsibility anymore?
Well, we, we, there's, there's another problem with that, you know, we have, we have our cup. Permit and we can only take out so much water out of the ground for, for irrigation, so if we're gonna have to have. Another source of um water for irrigation and so if, if we don't have this pond. Some point we'll be in, in trouble with, with Saint John's as far as how much water we can pull out of the ground, so. By taking water, having a pond where we can store it and then use it. Gives us, like you said, a revenue source, but is also it meets, it helps us meet our cup.
But it, it hasn't done that in all these years.
Yeah, I think, I think the thing that we're missing, Commissioner Velazquez, maybe we're not on the same. Understand here, that twelve point five million, it's not just to fix that small pond. It is for the pumping station to be built and constructed for its operational also. It's not just to fix, it's not say, well, the pond's fixed now, it's to have a pumping station built there that is operational too, that's what that price is included.
So that's why the funding comes from two different sources. The expansion of the plan comes from the four oh three fund. Which is increasing capacity and that's twelve point five million dollars. That will be for the pumping station and all the necessary equipment. To make the facility operational. The two million dollars that Glenn talked about earlier during his budget presentation. Comes from the four oh one fund and that's for repair of the line at the smaller pond at this point. But as Blanch said, he was originally intended to be phased for the large pond. And that will probably come back as an item, once we have the final evaluation of what the solution is going to be.
Is there an estimate of how much revenue the larger pond will yield once it's complete?
The larger one, they're not even considering that.
But eventually, I think that's kind of what they're getting at eventually.
As a revenue?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, yes, yeah.
Do have the.
Uh, we. Yeah, yeah, we can, we, we can send you something on it.
So I think that'll kind of help with what you're trying to, cause you wanna kind of give it back, but.
Yeah, I mean.
Once it's operational, like, you, you, so we can actually compare it.
Right now, we're just talking about the small pond. We're not even talking about the big pond.
Co- correct, we're talking about the pumping.
Okay, so I'm talking about the pumping station.
And the repair of the small ponds.
For both ponds?
Yes, the pumping station is for Golden Gem, period.
Period.
Okay.
Yes.
But the twelve and a half and the two million does not get that facility fully up and running?
Yes, no, it will.
The twelve and a?
Yes.
Then why are we adding two million dollars over the next few years?
Well, that's for.
Because of the larger pond.
For the larger pond.
We will still have to utilize the larger pond, cause we only gonna have fifty million gallons stored.
So that's what I'm, that's my question, the entire facility, east and west ponds, the fourteen point five million. Does that make both ponds up and running? Fourteen and a half million, is that both ponds? And we don't have to budget anything additional down the road?
No, that will only make the smaller pond fixed and the operational, the facility built and operational without a large pond.
Okay.
The large pond will be an additional expense later.
And we don't know what that is?
We don't know at this point because the evaluation is underway.
Okay.
And, and if you can recall, when Dio was here, he gave us an estimate around ten million, so that's why we kind of broke it out with the two million per year.
The, do we currently use the Golden Gem facility, east and west ponds? And our capacity calculations when developers come in to get approval and ask their's capacity for their project?
Uh, that's for reclaimed water, it's not currently used because it's not part of the, it's not included in the water reclamation facility permit with D E P.
Do we use it in any calculation, capacity calculations at all?
Not really.
Yeah, not really or no?
No, no, we, it, it's only applies to the reclaimed water, right? So we don't use.
And so then, the point that was made is the consumption use permit. That comes into play because we can only pump so much out of the aquifer for reclaim or for irrigation, things of that nature. And then we also have agreements with other local municipalities where we have to take on a certain amount of water as well, correct?
That is correct.
So this comes into play as well, cause we don't have any other capacity to, to take on that water other than this facility. Is that accurate?
That is a challenge, yes, at this point.
So and that's, and I, and, and it's, to answer some of Commissioner Velazquez's point of, of why can't we just give it back is cause. There's agreements in place that we may not have agreed to, but we now have to be bound to. And this pond or this facility wants up and running at twenty million dollars, thirty million dollars, whatever that may be, twenty five million. Then we can, we are meeting the, what we are bound to in these agreements.
Well, I think it's also important that we also, we always discuss planning for the future. I don't think it's smart to give back something that we potentially need for the future.
Correct, this was imagined as a regional solution for the reclaimed water system, right? Not only for the city of Apopka, but Altamont and other municipalities and Mount Dora, we also have an agreement with Mount Dora. To take up to three million gallons a day, right?
It, we've always had Mount Dora?
Taken any, correct.
Oh, I didn't know that they were part of that agreement.
Price, but that's only if you have excess water. So in this situation, we currently don't have, and they don't have the demand right now. But let's say with a growth, uh, anticipated growth with the, uh, Wolf Branch area there and. Other areas in the northwest section of the county and, and the city, the growth's gonna be there and the demand's gonna be there, so. We are now in the transitional period, this five to ten years will be the transitional period before you really s- see some. Serious revenue coming back and paying.
Well, and we're not gonna see, it's not revenue and revenue as we're thinking, it's, these are always supposed to be break even, correct?
Well.
I mean, enterprise funds are not supposed to be these huge income generators.
Yes, they are, yes, they are. Yes, that's, that's the rea- reason why it's called the enterprise.
Then why haven't we been doing that?
It's the rates, you got, you got to increase the rate.
And so you're asking for thirty one million dollars out of four oh three, we only have twenty six million in there.
No, it, it comes out of reserves, the balance. If you look on that revenue source on the page, you'll see that it's coming out of reserves.
Which re-
Fund four oh three.
How much is in their reserves?
This is four oh three we're talking about, am I?
Right, and you would say there's twenty six million.
Yes, but we're using some of the, the, hold on, to balance that. About eight point seven million. So that'll take that down to seventeen point seven, I said as of nine thirty twenty five. But it, we're using some of that in, for this FY twenty six budget.
So you're saying reserves when it's carryover?
Yeah, because yeah, that's the same thing.
Any more questions on Golden Gem?
No.
Oh yeah, that's planning.
Yeah, we're just trying to fully understand what's going on there. So what, what is, what is the carryover appropriations? What is that earmarked for? Cause that has to go towards whatever is.
The same um restrictions as the revenue coming in, it, it has to be related to capacity increases and stuff like that. But it's just excess revenue over the years. And sometimes when we, when we roll over the projects that started in a previous year. And rolls over to the current year, you typically see us use the carryover.
Which, that's what, that's I guess what I'm asking you.
Yeah, but they still coming out of reserve, same thing.
So how much in reserves do we have in four oh three?
Remember, I said the twenty six million as of nine thirty, estimated as of nine thirty twenty twenty five. Now, and we're planning to use to balance this budget in the FY twenty six, based on the expenditures presented. Eight point seven million, we'll take that down to seventeen point seven.
What is Saint John's as, uh, what is our timeline with Saint John's? Cause we've had several extensions with them over Golden Gem.
So the last extension we got was, I believe, six months until we prepare a plan, which we are doing right now. And we're gonna be presenting to them in the next two weeks. And then they will take that plan. The district office here will take it to, to their board, so they can vote on the extension, make a decision on the extension sometime in September.
How many extensions have we asked them already for?
I think I said four before, this may be the fifth one, yes. It was two thousand nineteen to two thousand fourteen, two thousand fourteen was, we asked for the first extension. Two thousand nineteen, there were five year cycles, we asked for the second, I believe. In twenty twenty two was the third one, and this should be the fourth one.
Two thousand fourteen, we asked for.
For five, for five years.
Okay, for five years, and then two thousand nineteen?
Two thousand nineteen, I think, I think they've granted three years extension of that.
Three years?
Mm-hmm.
And then twenty twenty two?
Uh, I think there was another two years extension if I remember right and then. The last one is the six month, yeah, the last one is a six month because of the.
And you asked for six months?
No, they, they determined that they will give us six months till September, so we can, so we can come up with a plan.
Six months to come up with a plan?
Correct, to complete the project, to complete the project, yes.
And this is the plan, so in that plan that you're going to present to them, what's the timeframe to get it done?
We have the design for the uh reclaim water facility at about ninety percent. We expect to have the final design ready in the next few months. And then if we get granted the extension, then we'll probably go into procurement for this twelve point five million dollars. For construction of it and that will take probably about two years or maybe even a little bit more to complete. Depending on the material availability, some of the items, they're very specific, it's not easy to procure, so.
So this is all if Saint John's accepts the plan?
Well, in a way, yes.
Will we know that when, after the meeting?
I think we will know that because we're gonna have two hearings for the budget approval in September and their meeting is sometime in September. I, I think it's at the beginning of September, I don't know the exact date, but, but I think it's sometime in the beginning of September.
But you're meeting with them in the next two weeks?
Uh, correct.
So you would know in two weeks?
No, we would not know, we will present our plan, they're gonna have to prepare their presentation for their board.
And when is their board? September?
In September, we don't know what the board's gonna decide.
Okay, so then the board will see it in September?
Correct.
Will we know? I mean, cause, or will I find out, well?
Well, we will immediately know, yes.
If after they have their board meeting that we are made aware of what the decision is?
Yes, absolutely, we, we work very closely with the district here in Orlando, so, which now has an office on Binian Road. And um we will immediately know of the decision.
And their board is what, September?
Uh, we can check on that, yeah, I don't, I don't know the exact.
Is that, is that open for any of us to go sit on their board and just listen? I need to go to attend their meeting?
Yes, it may be, it may be even broadcasted, I'm not sure, it may be even broadcasted, so.
Commissioner, what we can do, what we can do is we can get that information and share it with you.
Right.
We'll also, also have Vlad uh define the um renewals as, or the extensions as well for you.
Yes, that would be, um, yes, if you can send us each that, their board meeting as long as we can go and just sit and see. And hear what the um outcome is.
It's in Palatka, just so you know.
What?
It's in Palatka.
It's what?
Palatka.
It's in Palatka.
Oh, that's okay.
I don't know, just, I'm just telling you, it's not here in pocket.
No, um. If we can travel for Florida League of Cities where we too, I can go and sit on the, in a meeting. That's important, that's going to affect our city.
The revenue in this fund, what, i- i- we're getting interest and dividend on investments. What investments are, is that just part of? I didn't realize we did that, okay. And I know I've asked this, it's just not clicking for me, so I apologize. The thirty one point one two two million is inclusive of a carryover appropriation from last year of eight point seven.
Technically, it's money coming out of reserves, that's just, we just use that account for both, cause it's actually coming.
So, so, so it's not carryover, it's just reserves?
Yes.
Reserves coming over?
Yes.
Reserves from four oh three though?
Correct.
How much money do we have in four oh three reserves?
Again, as projected.
I know, I'm saying I didn't get, it's not clicking.
I know, that's fine, give him a minute.
Mayor, and please have decorum, you don't need to slam your hands down because I'm asking a question and it's not clicking. So please honor decorum that you read the statement of every meeting. You're supposed to be the chair, adhere to your own rules.
Projected for at the end of nine thirty twenty twenty five, twenty six point four.
In reserves?
In reserves.
Okay.
And if we use this eight point seven, that takes us down to seventeen point seven.
In reserves, that will be there after this FY twenty six. And then the rest of it will all come from FY twenty six revenues from impact fees, so thirty one million is built out of. The new revenues we're getting this year, anticipating getting.
Exactly, anticipating. And, and if you notice, I kind of kept them in line with the projected revenues for this year, yes. Because I, I don't know what the growth is gonna be, so I'm trying to be a little conservative here.
Understood, no, okay, thank you for taking the time to explain that again, sorry, it wasn't clicking. Uh, and everyone asked questions up here, so it should be okay that I'm asking that as well. Thank you.
Any other questions on Golden Gem? If not, we can move on to Master Lift Station? No, we hadn't.
No, we, we haven't finished, so, yeah, the last, the last request is for the two point five million dollars for the Master Lift Station seventeen upsizing. We already talked about it, it's four point six coming from the four oh one fund and two point five coming from the four oh three fund. For the increasing capacity for the total of seven point one million dollars, so we already covered that topic. And if you don't have any other questions, we covered the utility, for the utility. Uh, capital improvement program, we covered the four oh one and the four oh three fund. And we can move on to transportation, capital improvement program, which is the fund one or two.
Let's, let's go ahead and open up for public comment.
Okay.
Good evening, commissioners, as you well know, I've been very outspoken on Golden Gem over the years. Tonight really vindicates everything that I've told you over the last few years. But what I'm gonna say tonight is we really need to go all in on Golden Gem Road. This isn't something that we can walk away from. In fact, the only thing that Mayor Nelson and I have agreed on recently is we actually need to increase the capacity of Golden Gem Road. He stated he would like to see a hundred billion gallons of water in Golden Gem Roads and that's possible because it's a hundred acres. The solutions for Golden Gem Road are there. We don't have to spend as much money as potentially we might think we'd have to spend. The only problem we have with Golden Gem Road is ti- is time constraints. We are under the cosh with Saint John's, John's, I've spoken to them, I've arranged to go to their, their, their board meetings in Palatka. They're not happy with the fact that we, you know, this extension of twelve point five million, it's not an extension, it's, it's, it's an extension in time. This project was supposed to be online in twenty twenty three. So, the other thing is that we've changed some of the, the criteria of what was gonna go on that site. We were gonna have above ground storage tanks and I think Mayor Demings provided a one point five million dollar grant. For above the ground storage tanks. It appears that we're not gonna have those there now. I think we should still have them. And there's engineering reasons why it's beneficial to have above ground storage tanks. Uh, in terms of the liner and the small pond, the stress, the stress on the joints that occurred. And this is noted within city documentation and it was our engineer at the time with. with documentation going back and forth and erect, he does mention that there was stress on the joints. The problem is, I don't know if that liner can now be repaired. I think the main pond is definitely scrap. And unfortunately, if you go and have a look at it, you're going to find that the, the Golden Gem Road is, is in an atrocious state just now. You really won't believe how much damage has been done through erosion of water all the way down over the sinkhole that was filled in. There was some indication that the people said there was a concrete cap put on the sinkhole. That's not true. What actually happened was a flowable concrete put over it, only two inches thick. That cap is not structural. It will not prevent the sinkhole from dropping again if it hasn't been properly filled in. If there was sand and other things put in along with the riprap, you have the potential that that sinkhole will collapse again. So before you do anything with the main part of that pond, you really need a, a study with some sort of machine to, to, to work out whether it's, but I hope you get behind this and that we, instead of looking for three-hundred-and-fifty-million gallons, we now want a hundred, a thousand-million gallons.
Rod Olson, thirty-one fifty-six, Orange Hills Lane, just some questions and concerns. Uh, it was indicated by your predecessor that thirty percent of our operating equipment for pump stations, everything else, is past its normal life expend- expectancy. Has that been addressed in this budget?
I think there are more questions for the utility operations. Uh, we are, we, we actually have a program for replacement of a lot of this, um, and repair and rehabilitation for a lot of these lift stations now. The master lift stations, as we said, we're already putting, uh, seven-point-one-million dollars into the lift station number seventeen. And I think I mentioned earlier, we're going to be bringing probably next year the lift station seventy-seven, which is on Bradshaw, that has a similar capacity. So these are major lift stations, major items, they're important, they take a lot of flow, probably forty to fifty percent of the flow coming from the north goes through these two lines and stations, so.
All right, thank you, thank you. Uh, I'm concerned with as well, as and I know that some of the streets and sidewalks go back and forth between the county and the city, but we got a lot of problems across the city we need to be looking at. Uh, backflow preventers, I didn't, preventers, I didn't understand that. Is everyone now compliant with the backflow preventers or not?
We don't own the backflow preventers. So we send letters up to the customers, and they get thirty days. If they don't respond, we give them additional fifteen days. If they don't respond, then we automatically convert them. Potable and different, those are our P's, we only do the dual check, so we have to.
Miss Gal, do you come up here and make that, that's really good information for the residents, that's really, really good information.
I'm sorry.
No, no, you're good.
It's all right.
You're providing very good information.
Sorry. Gabby, Utility Program Supervisor, we don't own the backflows. Our only job is to provide education and make sure that we are making sure that our residents are keeping up with the backflows. So we put in what's called dual checks on our reuse lines, but for potable lines, you're generally required to have what's called an RP. So for our potable users, we are doing one-on-ones with them to make sure that they are testing their RP lines because we don't test them. Um, so that's a hard question to ask. Program-wise, yes, we are maintaining the program, we're doing the communication, we're doing the education, we're doing, um, letters, uh, door hangers, we're trying to get everybody to do their testing, commercial testing, everything. Uh, but because we don't own the backflows, the only thing that we can do is force the conversion if they don't reply to us. That's the only thing that we can do.
Thank you. Thank you, this is why three years ago I indicated we ought to be taking it over because the backflow preventers ultimately can impact other people other than the people in the house. We should be taking that over and doing it, that when we know it's done, when it's done, it goes on the schedule. Uh, the water meters, we've been kicking this can down the road for three years, there's no reason why we can't get this fixed now. We need the budget for it, we need to make sure, if we need to move money, it needs to be fixed. When, I've not verified the statistics, but apparently we have a higher utilization of water and a lower income for water, which tells me we're giving water away. Um, the aspect of, uh, it, the aspect of rate increases, we had a bigger rate increase last year with water and sewer. We should be looking at offsetting that with operational funds because we've been remiss at passing along increases as they came along. We got to stop kicking this can down the road. And gentlemen, as you did separately, I'll ask you separately my four questions. Uh, does the budget you presented represent everything you need, your department for staff needs, by way of people, supplies, materials, equipment to allow your staff to be successful and meeting the needs of the citizens that have come up of Apokka? Yes, Vlad? All right, uh, is every piece of equipment in your department on a preventive maintenance plan?
Yes, sir.
Yes, okay, is the plan adhered to?
Yes, sir.
Do you spot-check the plan?
Absolutely.
Adherence, all right, thank you, gentlemen.
Anybody else? All right, next up, Transportation Impact Fee Fund?
Right? We're moving to the Fund One or Two, which is the Transportation Impact Fee. And this fund is being used for funding the Transportation Capital Improvement Program. Some of the project's highlights, we have a request for five-hundred-thousand dollars for the roundabout design at Binion Road and Last Road. And we have another item, which is one-point-four-million dollars for the construction of the Sandpiper and Park, which is Rock Springs Road, intersection improvements and the traffic signal. And this basically represents a realigning of Sandpiper at the very west end with the west section of, uh, of Sandpiper across, uh, Rock Springs and putting a traffic signal there. We also have five-million dollars for Golden Gem Road reconstruction, but we're going to revisit this item and, uh, we're going to bring the Golden Gem Road, we're going to bring back to City Council and give you an update on our discussions with Orange County on the next council meeting, uh, the first council meeting in August, I believe it's August sixth, right? August sixth.
So you've already had a meeting with Orange County?
We, yes.
Okay, and, um, it's coming at which council meeting, August?
The first council meeting in August, August sixth, correct.
Okay.
Then we have one-million-dollar request, this is for design of Rock Springs Road and Wolf Road intersection improvements. Uh, the counties work with, i- it's a cost share with Orange County, and there's some, uh, funding also provided by Metro Plan that will help this project. And finally, we have three-hundred-thousand-dollar request for new sidewalk design and construction. This is mainly the area that will look for particular gaps in the sidewalk delineations. We're looking at the school areas, safety zones, where we can improve, make it all in compliance, so this is going to be one of the tasks, and a lot of these projects will, will fall under the purview. Of course, it's going to be the city engineers me being involved in that, but the new transportation coordinator, Bill Worton, that was introduced at our last council meeting.
And what was the allocation?
This is three-hundred-thousand dollars for the new sidewalks and design construction.
Okay, any other questions for Vlad on this one?
I, I have a question about the sidewalks and it, and it, because that's a lot of complaints I get. Have we did any type of study to see exactly where the needs are?
Right, I.
We did have a list of.
Yeah, I believe there's a list.
There is a list. It was given to us about three years ago, remember that they had a list of different streets that they were, some in some order.
Like rating the, the street quality or what?
Right.
Yeah, um, Mike Ortiz, good evening, Mayor and Commissioners, Streets and Storms Superintendent. Uh, yes, uh, we did a PCI score on roads, and we determined the level and condition of them, and then that's how we assess and determine which roads we do. For sidewalk, we go off of work orders. So whenever residents call in and report issues, we have a GIS map where we could put up the work orders and see hotspots. Then we go and assess the whole subdivision, and then from there, we start doing all-in-one instead of piecemealing it little by little with the contractor. Obviously, you know, we sat like critical issues where we address with staff internally, but the bigger ones, we want to kind of do all together, like a massive, like Piedmont Lakes is an example. We went in there with the contractors and started fixing everything. You see a lot of issues, though, with subdivisions where the trees are more prominent. Those are the ones that are the more problem ones that we have.
Uh, but this allocation is just for new sidewalks, this isn't replacement, this isn't specific to replacement?
No, so.
New sidewalk.
Where would we find the, like, allocation for?
In streets.
In streets?
For the repairs that Mike is referring to, that's in the streets budget.
Okay.
Yeah, but this is, as you mentioned, for new sidewalks.
Yes. Is there an updated list, I know she said three years ago, in regards to these streets and the sidewalks, are there updated lists?
Um.
There was, yeah, there was a list that was the deal that at the time had generated.
About three years ago?
I think it.
I do have the PCI report, so I could give you the updated on that. For sidewalk, it's just been work orders and going off of that. But for streets, we do have a study that was done.
Other than Piedmont Lakes, which has been, yeah, we'll, we're going to finish that up this year.
Yes.
The whole neighborhood will be completed.
Right, because as we, we move the trees, we have to fix the sidewalk.
Yes, yeah, it, it first comes the trees, then the sidewalks, and then later on asphalt, that's the order of operation.
Okay, we budgeted around seven-hundred-and-sixty-five-thousand specific to sidewalk repairs and curb repairs, okay.
Hmm.
Got it, from the Street Improvement Fund.
Hmm. Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. All right, Mayor.
Yeah. If I may, um, in regards to the street funds, as you know, we did increase that funding by increasing that transfer from general fund, um, last year. So just so you know that we maintain that same level of transfer, plus I had to do an additional nine-hundred-and-seventy-two-thousand, so it went from five-point-four to about, um, six-million, somewhere between there.
And this is kind of a different fund in that it doesn't, obviously doesn't generate enough revenue from gas tax. But we have to, we have to account for the gas tech mu- money going toward roads, so it's, so we pour additional general revenue into the, to, to supplement.
Hmm.
But, so that's how we get to the, the actual road.
That's how we help balance.
So it, it's need-based, though, that, like, that nine, that additional nine-seventy-two is based on an additional need that we had, or?
It's to balance that budget, yes.
Okay.
Yes, to balance the budget, because again, this is one of those particular funds where we're trying to close that gap again and not go into a deeper hole.
Can you give me that, and you know exactly where my question is going, and what the reserves on that one is, please?
Yes, um, we're projecting, as I said, as of nine-thirty, we, as of nine-thirty twenty-twenty-four, we are, we were in the negative. We're projecting because of rollovers and everything, they go to about nine-seventy-eight. So basically, I'm trying to keep us hold and give us an opportunity to try to build.
Plus nine-seventy-eight?
Yeah, no, nine-seventy, not plus, it's.
But I mean, is it, it's a negative nine-seventy-eight, or it's a positive?
It's a negative, negative, it's a negative nine-seventy-eight. It was a negative six-six-five as of nine-thirty twenty-twenty-four. We're projecting that to go to a negative nine-seventy-eight as of nine-thirty twenty-twenty-five.
So additional three-hundred-thousand?
Yes, which is coming from, yeah, that's coming from the twenty-five budget, basically.
Okay, and we're funding from reserves, from general fund reserves, is that?
No, it, well, we transfer money from the general fund.
Okay, it's, it's a, a line item, basically, effectively, on the general?
You know how the transfer is coming from the enterprise funds to the general fund?
Hmm, same concept.
Same concept, going the other way. Okay?
All right, anybody from the public, which is.
Whoa, 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 whoa.
Sorry. I, I, I think I asked this in a general view some time ago, a- and it's in reference to Apokka Court Road. We, we were talking about the county wants to take it over. It, it was supposed to have been full-laned from the hospital to Martin to where the traffic light is. None of that's taken place, so where are we? And then in addition to that, now that those apartments are on Martin Road, there are kids that are walking down Apokka Court Road where there is no sidewalk. A- a- and it's just an accident waiting to happen. And so is my understanding that when it was full-laned, that there was going to be sidewalks included as well? So, so where, where are we?
Why don't we do this, why don't we, because I, I know Jean's been kind of running point on, on Apokka Court. You want to, if, Bradley, you want to put that down as a presentation for the next meeting? Yeah, and let her kind of explain, because we're, we're in for a, a big raised ramp, like twenty million?
Twenty.
So she can give you kind of the update on that, and then where we are with the county and all, yeah, so we can, we can definitely give you that.
Yeah.
That information.
One other thing, because I want to make sure I mention it. And as far as if you, if you're done with streets and all of that in one or two, stormwater, as I said earlier, what we have factored in here is a twenty percent increase on that to support that budget as well. And again, we're trying to, again, build up the reserves in that fund, so I do have a small contingency in there of about three-hundred-and-seventy-two. And I think Vlad kind of indicated that in his presentation when he said contingency. So again, we're trying to turn things around, um, and move forward.
Any other questions for Vlad on the streets?
Well, and at the same time, we're doing the stormwater, that same Apokka Court Road, while the flooding's taking place, before we take it open, we need to make sure that that's corrected, otherwise.
So that particular project between, uh, Northern Road, I believe, Thirteenth Street and Houghton, the county has an active project, and we're, we're, we're working with them on that.
It, it's another one of those great deals like we're getting on Golden Gem.
Yes, yeah, so they'll, they'll, they'll be fixing, with that project, they'll be fixing the issue with the stormwater.
Sure, okay.
And the flooding, and this is particularly for those four or five homes.
Yes.
On the south side, that is the project, yes.
All right, I'm watching.
Yeah, okay.
Don't hold your breath. For the Sandpiper and Park intersection improvement and signal, what's the timeline for that project?
That, as soon as we advertise it, I guess, the funds will become available October first. The design is pretty much ready.
Okay, that was my question.
Yeah, they have the design.
I saw that we've spent some money on design, I didn't know if it was done or we're right with that, okay.
The design is completed.
Okay, and then Vic Road, we're four-laning, not all of it, but a, a.
Correct, there, there will be in three phases, there will be a design project.
So this is just for design?
That's only for design, correct.
Okay. Oh, I see, design is phase, design, okay, got it, thank you, okay. And then what is road capacity enhancements?
That basically is to support like the, the excess road upsizing agreements, like if they do exceed, like some of the DAs that we talked about for water and wastewater, which is the upsizing for water and wastewater. But this is like if they do work over and above what is required, so.
For developers?
For the developers.
Okay, so that's specifically to reimburse developers for any additional, uh, roadwork they may be doing?
Yeah, whatever they're doing, yeah.
Okay, okay.
Anybody else got a question? No, open up public comment?
Albert McKimmy, three-six-oh-three, Golden Gem Road. Just an observation, uh, it appears that there's a lot of inconsistencies about how previous employees of the city valued and estimated work in comparison to what our current employees are doing. I have a look at Golden Gem Road. If my memory serves me correctly, when Pam was here, we had discussions on Golden Gem Road costing perhaps as much as, or even more than thirteen-million dollars. And today I see up there in five-million dollars. Everywhere else, we're told that construction is going up exponentially, it is costing three or four times as much. Is this reduced sum of money on Golden Gem Road because of some numerical development in the pioneering agreement? Or are we still totally lost with the pioneering agreement? Yeah, five-million, we have to be realistic with the figures that we're putting in these budgets. Five-million dollars for a road that needs to be completely ripped up, it needs subbase, it's not realistic. So the question I now have to ask you, Commissioners, if we could have a glaring example of something that's reduced in cost by, you know, half, how much of these other things are realistic?
Yes, to respond to Mr. McKimmy's question, the project is actually ten-million dollars, just divided into two consecutive years. That's why it's listed as a five-million, the five-million will come the following year.
Is that inclusive of that additional?
That's, the ten-million is up to, um, Coral Reef, I believe it's called, yes. The addition will bring potentially thirteen to fourteen-million dollars, like Mr. McKimmy.
The addition will bring potentially thirteen to fourteen million dollars, like Mr. McKeemay just presented.
Alright, because I do think that's something to, that we should evaluate is what that looks like, because then we will have three sections of road.
So we have the same numbers, there's no, yeah, sorry for the confusion.
And then do we have an update on the pioneer agreement? I know that, I guess, do we know what's going on with that?
As far as I know, they are still moving forward, you know, I I haven't heard of any delays. So I don't know if you have, Vlad?
Yeah, so the the project is right now at a sixty percent design. They'll be moving, they, the plan is for Paulson Bennett was designing the project to have it fully completed by the end of the summer. And then we'll, we'll see how the construction will be, will be taken from that point on. We may have to break it into phases and try to accommodate some of the work that is going on actually right now. Potentially between Waypoint and just west of uh, I'm sorry, just east of Golden Gem. That may be probably the first phase, and then we'll continue towards Plymouth Surranta. So the design includes everything from Waypoint, which is the new road on the west side of Golden Gem, the new developments, uh, crossroads, from that point to just east of Plymouth Surranta.
To east of what?
East of Plymouth Surranta.
That's all included in the pioneer agreement?
That's all included in the pioneer agreement, yes.
Okay, so are are you are the kind of the main staff member that's running and kind of with the pioneer agreement?
I'm into that now, yes.
Okay, okay. Last I had heard, it was our previous city administrator, they had said that there was multiple copies of the pioneer agreement and some of the developers were debating which one was the accurate one. Has that been finalized? Is that?
I'm not aware of it being multiple copies.
Yeah.
Uh, we had one pioneering agreement, what there are multiple of, there was other agreements that had been approved before then, and all of that got incorporated
Yes.
into the pioneering agreement. The only one that was outside of that was the Wild Oaks, if you know, that recently came to council for an amendment. It is not an easy puzzle, but that's my understanding of it, but it's only one pioneering agreement.
Well, I didn't mean that there was multiple, I meant there was versions that were different is what they were saying, so again, that's what I was told. I I can only go off.
There's only one pioneering agreement for the reconstruction of um Kelly Park Road.
And have we gotten, or the developers agreed to, gotten all the um right away that they need for Kelly Park? Because I know that was an issue.
There were two parcels that
Three, three parcels.
That they needed in order, and and I know that our city attorney was doing some eminent domain.
We're working on that, yes. Yeah, that, those are the three parcels on the south east corner of Effie Drive.
Right.
Two, two on the, ones on the south side, one on the north side.
Yeah, correct, yes.
Okay, so that's still going through the process.
Will be resolved probably by the end of the week.
Delaying that process.
Okay, so they're not going to be able to move forward until eminent domain is finished? Yeah, right. So that, I mean, that, that's
There, there is a, one of the developers actually offered a solution to them, so I don't know if they're going to accept it. To kind of improve the backroads there and it's part of Wild Oaks, it's the Wild Oaks developers, so.
Okay, yeah, because that can take some time to do eminent domain, so that's concerning. But it is what it is, it's, it's, I mean, that's, we kind of knew that going into it as well, but not everyone may agree to that. Okay, thank you.
Alright, any other questions? If not?
Rod Olson, thirty one fifty six, Rolling Hills Lane. I can't begin to tell you the frustration. The questions asked, oh, we need to have sidewalks. Those are questions that need to be asked when you're approving one new development after another. I cruised this county, the community for the Citizens Police Academy, and there's hundreds of apartments going up in Binion and Boy Scott. They widen a little road right in front of them. It's not going to handle the traffic coming. We've got hundreds of homes, if not thousands, going in on Kelly Park. It's a cattle path, other than a couple openings that they widen the road for the new development. Look at those apartments right out there and look at it. We've got to be asking these questions in front. Questions that need to address the growth that we're approving. You guys sit up here and approve one after another, and we don't have the roads, we don't have the sidewalks, we don't have the schools. This is crazy.
Roger's back in seven, West Mason. I just had a couple of questions. Um, in regards to transportation, I believe it was a a report done by, can't think of his name right now, with the bike paths and trails going through the city. Is the budget accounting for any of that improvements being put in at a particular time? Um, I know it was done probably about six to eight months ago. And then another question, I know you guys was talking about sidewalks being repaired and things that nature, but it's it's kind of like um, you're approving developments that's putting the sidewalk between the street. Yeah, street and the sidewalk that creates over time where it's going to destroy the sidewalk like it did in Piedmont with Kyler. So it seemed like it's kind of, it's kind of working backwards. I know at one point in time, um, the code required that the street tree be placed on a lot. But it looks like at some of the new developments, they're going back to the old design that's between the street and the sidewalk, which is going to create problems. So I'm just thinking as far as if that is the case, it might be something that we might need to look at, maybe the type of tree that's being placed in those areas. So um, this is two questions I have for you guys, thanks.
Vlad, you got?
Did, I, I don't see anything in the current budget for that. That's what I was looking for, but I don't, I don't see anything.
Okay, and and for the trees are, yeah, we've, 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 we've looked at our tree on this and trying to get appropriate, like Piedmont Lakes, we're not putting back oak trees, we're putting back Dutch Elms, which will won't, shouldn't pop the sidewalk, so that was, yeah, they only had seven foot between the the street and the sidewalk and obviously that's, an oak tree doesn't do well in seven foot right away, so that's the reason we're moving to the Dutch Elm in those neighborhoods and future neighborhoods should be the same, either like a, um, go, a um, Little Jim Magnolia or a Dutch Elm would be more appropriate for that smaller space, so. Alright, with that, we'll see you back tomorrow at five.